Thank you and welcome to our regular scheduled meeting of March 1st. Please note the council is in full attendance this evening. We'll move straight into the agenda. Our first item is items from council. Anyone have anything they'd like to bring up now?
Can we get a little explanation of the Round Rock ordinance when it relates to panhandling, Tom?
Sure. There was an email that I received with a copy of the city of Round Rock's anti-panhandling ordinance. And the question you're asking is kind of, I guess, whether it would survive judicial scrutiny as the others that we looked at. In that ordinance, there's a specific provision that says certain types of conduct are prohibited, such as soliciting for personal gain. And I forget exactly what the list is. The relevant point, though, is that it is a specific list of behaviors that is prohibited, specific types of speech. That makes it content based on its face, which means you fall into the strict scrutiny analysis. Oh, Mayor's handing me a copy.
You don't have to talk about all of it tonight, though, are you?
No, no, I'm just gonna kinda answer. The fact that that list is in there means that it is subject to strict scrutiny, and if it were reviewed by a court of law, I think it would fail as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
On that note, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Buckner.
I just wanted to ask again if you could refresh my memory again, why permitting the activity would not be a viable option?
The difference between panhandling and solicitation, that is actually trying to, you know, request somebody to buy something from you, door-to-door solicitation, is that panhandling is speech, but solicitation is commercial speech. And governments clearly have more authority to regulate commercial activity than they do pure speech. And since, you know, "Hey buddy, can you spare a dime?" is not asking for you to buy anything from me, it's just asking you to give me some money. It's not commercial speech.
Okay.
I know it's a very complicated and difficult subject.
Service or product?
Service or product. If you're asking for money in exchange for service or product, it's commercial speech, and we can, we have more authority to regulate that.
Let me jump in real quick and say, I don't wanna stop anybody from asking staff of any questions, but I know there are people here that will speak to that issue tonight. I spoke to some of them earlier today, and it's perfectly fine if council would like to put it on an agenda for another meeting, just like I put it on the agenda last time. If one of you guys wants to do that, we can and explore other items. I just wanna put it on the agenda so people know. So, but I didn't wanna stop y'all. Is there other questions?
I'd like to do that. I'd like to put it on the agenda so that we can talk about what we can do instead of, because, I mean, I know I've gotten a lot of emails from folks of what other cities are doing, so I'd like to explore that.
And if y'all are receiving those kind of messages from people, I'd appreciate you forwarding those to me. I've gotten several of them. I'll tell ya, I haven't seen one yet that I think would survive judicial scrutiny, but as those ideas are floating up, I think that's the way to kind of review the options on the table.
Okay.
Okay.
There does seem to be less of them since there've been the anti-panhandler protesters. Just an observation.
And I've encouraged those folks to please come and share all their thoughts and ideas tonight with us. There's nothing wrong with that at all. It's just that we can't really respond back. It's not on the agenda.
Mr. Gooch?
Yes.
When you're looking at those things that we can do, could you explore again Mr. Halipaska's idea of signage that the city would be able to put up?
Absolutely.
And also, I'd ask Mr. Kaminsky to look into reshaping the mediums where they wouldn't be so comfortable to stand on.
We've discussed that. You've got to worry about ADA compliance with the mediums, but...
Yeah, but that center median, I don't think is meant to be a...
Yeah, and that's also a text on highways, so we'll have to talk to text on.
Obviously, we can talk about a lot more options. Again, this is a slow process, and I've been asked about the process and explained it to some people, and, you know, government doesn't really move quickly. It's by design, right? Okay. Can we, on another note, item E2, can I move it up after Citizens Communications? That is a farmer's market resolution, so that person doesn't have to wait too long. Y'all have a problem with that? We'll just do E2. Right. But I wanna go ahead and do Citizens Communications first, then we'll do E2. Is there anything else, council? Okay. If not, we'll close that part of the agenda and move into B2, which is Citizens Communications. So, anyone that would like to speak to us about any issue on this agenda or anything not on the agenda can come to the podium now, and please be, state your name and address for the record. And as a courtesy, we try to restrict your comments to five minutes or less, courtesy to everyone else. Thank you. Y'all just take turns. Mr. Davis, you can come up soon.
Good evening. Thank y'all so much for taking time to look at this and give us the moment to speak to you. This is an opportunity for the food bank to bring a farmer's market to our community as a program under the food bank, and also gives us an opportunity to provide access locally grown, homegrown nutritious food to the people, especially in the desert, food desert area surrounding our downtown area. It also gives us an opportunity to provide the 11 counties to get together, network more, and really see who's out there producing. The farmer's market, the previous farmer's market did come to us and ask us if we'd be interested, and we said yes. We do have their buy-in. They're excited about partnering with us, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Sounds good.
I guess you sit down.
Okay.
Thank you.
Name is BJ Davis. I live at 410 Iron Gate, Victoria, Texas. I was here about three weeks ago, and we had a discussion a little bit about annexing my property out, kinda off of Future Ball Airport Road. And there were some questions that I raised that I wanna, number one is, I wanna thank John Kaminsky and Tom Halipaski for helping and clarifying some of it and cleaning it up, and I agree with them 100%. But the part that I do not like or do not agree with is the fact that if that land is taken in, number one, I lose my habitat for wildlife in the area because I hate to cut a tree down, and I don't wanna do that until it's absolutely necessary. Number two is, how do I get rid of my brush piles if I do that? Number three is, I have to pay, they said $3,000 a year taxes. For what? There's nothing, I'm putting all the infrastructure in, so there's no problem there. But the first problem was that I had promised the city, when I started my subdivision, that I would not have anything outside of the subdivision. Everything that I did would be voluntarily brought into the city limits. And I've kept that promise, and I wanna continue to keep that promise because that is not gonna be half of it in the county, and it's gonna turn out to be a mess. I want it to be structural. I want my people that live there to be happy and to have city facilities and things that the city can bring that we can't get anywhere else. So, I'm asking you to help me out here and not do it at this time because I'm fixing to develop about 10 more acres of it, and, of course, we're going to the city to ask them to accept it as part of the city structure. So, that's what I have to say. If y'all got any questions, glad to answer them.
Thank you. All right.
Mayor, Councilman, my name is Frank Torres. I live at 347 Wallwood. I'm here just to find out, to ask you guys to help me understand a little bit better why the heavy increase of the recycling for each taxpayer's homes. And one of the things that I've been, I've been also involved with and thinking about a lot is prior years, I've also always looked at the management of our recycling system and the waste management system. I've had, I had visits with Mr. Darrell at one point, and that was some time back, and it seems like we had the conversation, and the first minute of that conversation, yes, I shared my concern with him. He came back and said, "Well, the problem is, we don't, we only have one truck, and we have an old truck, we need..." Okay, bingo. That's the root problem. And I said, "So, why don't we buy another truck instead of..." Now, you know, there's so many things that should be taken into consideration, I pretty suppose, that not being the manager of the city waste. But, you know, a lot of times, we, I think we should look at the root cause of things instead of coming up with things like, if you remember, everybody remembers the time where everybody was supposed to cut the pieces of three foot long, and they had to be no more than three inches thick, and then all those things that came to me. And then I had a conversation with one of the route supervisors, and I asked, "Can you please give me some rationale where this number's come from and why they make a difference, and why those, how are they imported?" And I says, "Well, I don't know. That's just the way it is." You know? And so, again, here we have a recycling system that is not working as we thought it would work, and all of a sudden, you know, do we keep it going again if we can, if we want to do that? Then we'll just have to increase the recycle fee. And why is it, I guess my question is, that when things don't work out, the taxpayers are the ones that gets, gets to pay the price for things not going right. And I'm just here, I'm not mad or anything like this, I'm just trying to find out for someone to help me understand, you know? I know that we have talked about that before.
Mr. Torres, good questions, and we're gonna, on C1, are you gonna be able to stay for a little bit?
Yes, sir.
When we, I wrote some of that down, and we'll get those hopefully answered for you during, when we get to that item. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
My name's Tanya Gerloff. I live at 901 Mead Road. I wanted to bring to y'all's attention, which some of you have already seen in the paper, these panhandlers that people say are, for the most part, not violent. I have talked with several women and men who've been harassed, had their car reached into by panhandlers, wanting to know why they wouldn't give them money, reaching for keys. These people are willing, when they know they're gonna be on the agenda, to come talk to y'all. These are young women. These are gentlemen who sit there at a red light, and I've sat at a red light and had one call me every name in the book because I would not even look at him. I've had a knife pulled on me. I had one come towards me threatening me. These are not as timid and non-harmful people as it came out to appear that some of y'all were saying they are. They're not. There are some of them with their, they may be mentally ill, but some of their mental illnesses make them even more dangerous. When they're carrying 12-inch blades in their backpacks and stuff like that, that becomes a hazard. And my question would be, what happens when one of those panhandlers reaches into a car, pulls one of these girls out of the car, and either puts her in the hospital or kills her? The city sitting there saying, "There's nothing we can do about it," what happens when they come and say, "Okay, we're gonna sue the city too"? You know, these are things that, you know, you don't wanna be sued for stepping on their rights of freedom of speech, but we have the right to feel secure in our city. And I live in an area where there is a mass problem with the transit panhandlers, and a lot of what I've seen are out-of-towners, people who have come in from out of town. And why is CPS not being called when law gets called on families using their children, their babies? Why is CPS not being called? Why is this not being done? That is endangerment to children, and that's where I'm frustrated and wanna know why these things are not being done and why it's taken so long. I come from Austin to down here. When I moved here, we didn't have this problem like we do now. And to be honest with you, it's scary to pull up on an intersection when there are panhandlers standing there. I wanted to share that with you, and there will be other ladies coming when it's on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the privilege of speaking. I'm gonna touch on a couple of subjects that have been touched on already today. I always thought that lying and deceiving people to defraud them of money possession was a criminal activity, and it should be treated as such. So, politicians beware.
Name and address for the record, please.
Am I too loud?
No, no, you didn't say your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're required to get that.
Okay, I'm sorry. My name's Anthony Cordy. I live at 506 Buena Vista here in Victoria, Texas. So, the panhandler situation, yeah, there's a stigma to people that are, that are broke and have no money, and it's a good thing there is a stigma to that because that just shows there's still some human dignity in the whole situation. I think that a suggestion I have to deal with this is that the organizations that take care of these people, that they make a letterhead, on a letterhead of their own stationery, they type out the validity of these people having a need with an expiration date. I'd suggest three months. That's very prominent on that letter. That way, when they come up asking for money, people know that this is a valid need that these people have, and there's an expiration date, the organization can track these people more, better. And if the expiration date's on there, then if it falls into possession of somebody that's not allowed to have that, they can only do it for a certain period of time, and I think that would take part, carry part of that problem. The recycling thing, recycling has never really been a profitable business, a profitable venture. I scrap metal on the side, and it's not profitable at all. I mean, I probably make 20 cents an hour in the time I spend doing it. And the sad thing is that the most durable items are the items they're not gonna want to accept anymore, and that is gonna cause a problem with the landfill. I don't know if they're still trying to harvest methane, I don't know if that will affect that at the landfill. The one thing I have noticed as well, the heavier plastics, if you just leave them out in the sunshine, I know it looks ugly, and it may, I don't think it'd blow around much, but it would degrade faster if you let that out, to be exposed to heat especially, instead of burying it and causing it to be, taking up more space in the landfill over a longer period of time. Glass, I read an article years ago that they could grind up glass to use as an aggregate. I don't know if they can, if it's still viable or not, but that is some other thing that they could do with that product. So, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Citizens Communications still open?
Hello, Mayor, City Council. My name is Kevin Schumack. Thank you for allowing me to speak about a growing aggressive panhandler problem in Victoria. We can no longer bury our heads and hope it will disappear. It's an embarrassment to our town, visitors, children, wives, and family who come here to spend their dollars. We want people to, who visit our town, to feel safe and think of our city as, you know, as a city, as a clean city. The panhandlers are a distraction. They slow traffic, harass our families, they are aggressive, they have pulled knives on civilians, they have assaulted locals, they are threatening, intimidating, and scary to the public. Make it illegal for a driver handing anyone money outside of their vehicle while the vehicles stopped or moving on a public roadway. If you have been listening to the public outcry over the past couple of weeks, you would understand why something must be done. You have laws already in place that recur of a great deal of this. Texas Traffic Code, Section 552, Period 007, Solicitation by Pedestrians. A person may not stand in a roadway to solicit a ride, contribution, employment, or business from an occupant of a vehicle, except that a person may stand in a roadway to solicit a charitable contribution if authorized to do so by the local authority having jurisdiction over the roadway. We have Romanians working in Victoria, Edna, and Port Lavaca. They show up in a van, the man usually sits in the vehicle while, while he places a young woman and toddlers near the busy highway. They ask for food, gas, and money. When you offer them food or gas, they only want money. I stopped and spoke to one of them just the other day. She told me where she was from. I asked her why she was doing this, and she said to raise money to get to her child. I asked her where her child was. She said with her mother in Arizona. She posed and let me take a picture of her while she was smiling. These are professionals coming to our city to take advantage of our generous community. Have you thought about the possibility that may be a form of human trafficking? There are several Romanians working in the city of Victoria. My wife and I stood on the intersections, bringing awareness to this growing problem. We held our signs saying "No" to panhandlers. We collected $753 in five and a half hours for a local organization who helps the fortunate, less fortunate homeless. We should be teaching our community about a hand up, not a handout. Make it illegal for passersby to give them money. They are impeding traffic, causing a dangerous to themselves and to the panhandler and other motorists. I spoke to a couple of homeless people yesterday and videoed their story. One says he's looking for work, hates standing on the corner begging for money. I told him we have local organizations that would help him. The sad truth is, a great deal of these people have drug addictions and alcohol addictions. The second man I spoke to stands in the middle of Medium and Verro Daily on front of Fairfield Inn, has serious mental issues. This is an accident waiting to happen. Will you continue to sit back until someone is run over or killed, assaulted, before you put a stop to this? Austin Police Department wants to crack down on roadside panhandling, February 24, 2016. They're calling for the city ordinance that expands anti-loadering measures to cover road shoulders and mediums. The envisioned ordinance would aim towards expanding road mediums and shoulders where loadering is prohibited, Austin Police Department Art Fortune said. "To me, it's waiting for something to happen," he said. "If they change the ordinance, they might be able to say, 'Hey, you can be here, but move along.'" Seven reasons to stop giving money to panhandlers. Number one, you could be giving somebody money for their last drink or drug, the one that kills them. Number two, don't enable. The more time a person can properly beg for money, the less time they can seek productive employment. Number three, panhandling supports addictions. Do you really think by food, buying, really think they buy food with your dollars? The vast majority beg to support addictions. Number four, panhandlers are often aggressive and have physically assaulted people who refuse to give them money. Number five, panhandling will remain a problem as long as otherwise well-meaning people are duped into financing their addictions. Number six, panhandling becomes a profession. We all would like to think that this panhandler only begs long enough to get back on his feet, but how many do you see the same handler at the same intersection, month after month, year after year? Number seven, if you feel charitable, volunteer with one, volunteer with or donate directly to service agencies, charities that serve the homeless. Such organizations feed and help the chronically needy in very way you'd like your panhandler daughter to do. You have a tough job ahead of you? You must not turn your heads from this growing problem. It's time you, as our elected officials, listen to our citizens and put into place an ordinance stopping panhandling. You must work harder, talk to neighboring cities, find a solution to solve this problem. More people would be here, but they have to work. Another thing I would suggest is having a meeting at a later date and a later time so more people can come and participate in something like this. Thank y'all. Yeah, I was nervous.
Thank you. You did fine, Mr. Schumack.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. My name is Robert Costin. I reside at 624 Pennsylvania Avenue, Victoria, Texas. Mr. Mayor, I can't say any more than what Kevin just said, other than we actually do need to take a very serious look at this. The city attorney said last time that we were here that we would maybe end up in court. We might end up in court. You will end up in court if somebody gets hurt, okay? Because if the city fails to protect the public, what other courts does somebody have? They have the right to sue you. Just as I walk out the street and somebody says Merry Christmas to me from the city, I can sue you, okay? It's stupid, but I could do it, okay? So, somebody is gonna sue you for anything, okay? We need to take a realistic look at this. People using children out there on the, on the medias, that's ridiculous, okay? It takes three seconds for a child to be killed, okay, when the parent turns their back to that child. We have plenty of pictures. The pictures have been posted all over Facebook, and I'm sure the council has seen those pictures, okay? If you haven't, then you're not lucky, okay? With a mother standing there, with two kids sitting behind her, a toddler about two years old, another toddler three, it takes, like I said, a split second for them to turn their back to that child and that child to walk out on that roadway. If somebody hits that child, can we all live with this? Can you? Can I? No, I can't, okay? So, I'm asking our city to take a very serious look at this, as I did last week. To our city attorney, you don't wanna violate anybody's civil rights, and I understand that, sir, okay? But you can go at this at a different way. We have an ordinance in place right now that states that people can't go out and solicit without a permit, okay? We have city ordinance like that. Why don't you just go ahead and make a city ordinance that you cannot panhandle unless you have a permit? And again, I'm gonna reiterate the part, because they are in a dangerous area, make them provide a million-dollar bond, okay? Or a million dollars with the liability insurance. You're not violating their civil rights, sir. You're not violating their civil rights at all. You have required for businesses in this town to have a million dollars insurance to go ahead and conduct business, so why not these people? I can't say any more, folks. Just please think about it. Sit down, do some soul searching, okay? Because every single one of y'all are gonna be held accountable for it, okay? If something happens to somebody. I love this city. I don't wanna see nothing go bad with the city. I am not here to tear down our city. I'm here to help our city, okay? Have a good night.
I live at 2280 Brazos. That's what he said. I don't, I've never done this before, so I don't know if that's what we're supposed to say. You know, citizen of Victoria. I'm here to, to just kinda check in about this recycling thing. I feel like it's, you know, taking us in the wrong direction. There are cities in Texas that get paid to have their citizens recycle, whereas we are paying some company to do this recycling. I assume it's a company, it's not part of the city, right? Is that right? Okay.
We contract with the company.
Right, exactly. So, I mean, it makes no sense if we're gonna have to now pay more than, you know, we're more than doubling what we were paying. I understand it's a small amount, but I can see this going up again and again over time, and eventually, it's this thing that we're all paying a lot for, for a company to benefit, when it's really hurting our city. In Plano, Texas, they get paid to recycle. The company has to pay the people for their goods that they put in their recycling bins. In fact, they made so much money doing that that they reduced the garbage and sewer costs for those citizens of Plano. So, the direction we're going in seems to me harmful to our city. You know, I don't know all the details and everything, but I am concerned about the path that we're taking, and that's all that I have. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jenny Stafford with Midcoast Family Services. I live at 210 Wearden, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I wanted to tell you about an experience I had last week. I was privileged to go to Shalimer Elementary School and talk to the entire second grade about social studies and about some subjects that they were studying. And so, I took a book, and it was a book about a family and their day and how daycare went and some of the experiences, and we got through with the book, and we talked about the experiences they had that made them a good citizen. And it was things like trying your hardest, playing fair, helping others, taking care of the environment. And the end of the book, or in the middle of the book, the high point, was when the mayor showed up. And the mayor showed up and told the kids in the neighborhood about this new playground they could have if they just had some help cleaning it up. So, of course, you know, the kids in the book cleaned up the playground, and the book concludes with the youngest one saying, "Gee, you think I could grow up to be mayor someday?" And of course, that was a great opportunity for us to talk about what it takes to be a good leader, whether it's mayor. And of course, with the presidential election going on, we talked about, you second graders, one of you could even grow up to be president someday. We talked about how all those things would make a good leader and a good president. And as I was leaving, and I drove down Navarro, the epicenter of the panhandling and homeless dispute, it dawned on me the things that would require... it dawned on me the things that would require a second grader, or me for that matter, to become an elected official or president by some miracle, is the very same thing that our homeless people need. First of all, they need to be surrounded by somebody who believes in them, somebody who believes that they've got some worth and some value. They need to be surrounded by somebody who's going to help educate them about what's really the rules in this world and what are the policies that they need to understand. They need to be surrounded by somebody who's going to help them understand the system, how to find a job, how to get housing, how to apply for benefits. And they're going to need some financial assistance as well, because just like that presidential candidate is not getting, with the exception of perhaps one, is not going to get elected by his own means, they've got to have support from lots and lots of people. And it's not just short-term support. It's a long-time support. So I thought it was, you know, ironic that those two things were so similar. As we went through, back to Shalimer, and I have to tell you, I'm not sure which is scarier, talking to y'all or talking to eighty second graders, that was pretty scary. They were great. But we talked about what makes our country great and why we want to be a leader of our country. And on their level, we talked about things they would understand, like roads. You know, isn't it great you can get in your car and drive and go to Houston? Isn't it great that you can go to the hospital when you're sick? Our government thinks that's important. Isn't it great that we have a police department that comes when we're in trouble? And isn't it great that they have a great school to go to? And they, you know, they understand all those principles. But it reminded me the other thing that's great about this country, and that is the fact that we believe in the rights of the individual. And that person who stands on the corner, whether he has a sign in his hand or not, is just as valuable as anybody else that stands on the corner. I think we need to be reminded that even people who have distasteful and disgusting messages have been approved by the Supreme Court. In the name of religion, they may stand and boycott a funeral or some sort of religious service. Supreme Court has said that they've got the right to do that, just as much as anybody else has a right. But I have to tell you, the real reason I'm here tonight, while I think you're just as important as you can be, and I care about the homeless. I had another conversation last week with a man that I've known a long time. He's been in and out of the street. He's probably about as low on the social ladder as you could get. He has lost his ID again, looking for help. And that day, he really just wanted a Whataburger. He said he'd eaten at so many soup kitchens, he just really wanted a hamburger, and I can understand that. But he came up to me and he said, Ms. Jenny, you spoke up for us, didn't you? And I said, what do you mean? He said, you went to the city council and you spoke up for us. And he said, thank you. You know, I'm going to speak up for the homeless all day long, those who don't have much power. All they want in life maybe is a Whataburger. And I'm going to keep reminding us what it takes to be a good citizen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Griffin. I live at 104 North Liberty. I hadn't planned to come up and visit with you all, but I feel like I need to make a statement here. I believe that Mr. Schumak maybe has his heart in the right place, but just like our city attorney said, I think that it is all just a pretext for not having to look at the kind of people that he doesn't want to look at or have them standing on the streets. And the reason I'll tell you that is because he's out there in the median at dark. I saw his video with his camera phone, with the light on, videotaping. So if safety is really an issue for them, that certainly doesn't seem like the best way to go about it, standing in that skinny median, another second person with a video light on on your phone. And I don't know if you've been in the movie theater with someone when they turn their phone on, but that's a bright light. And so if you're doing videotaping people in the middle of the median at dark, at dusk, that's not very safe. So I have a hard time believing that safety is his main concern. I also feel like the videotaping that they're doing of these people is distasteful. I think it puts people's mental health issues out there in a way that is derogatory and negative. I'd like to believe, again, that he only has his best interest at heart for the people that are here, but it doesn't make sense to me when I see the way that he talks about them and says, see, that's the kind of guy you don't want to give your money to. Just because someone has a mental health issue doesn't mean that they aren't deserving of any and everything that the rest of us get. He's talking about the Romanians and the mentally ill. And I think at this point, maybe we can just add any other, that kind of person, the gays, the Jews, any of those other kind of things. And I feel like, once you start singling people out, that's really not about you wanting to do what's safest for the entire community. I think it's really about singling people out. And I think that's why he's out on the middle of the road where it is so unsafe, with a videotape, phone taping other people. Now, that's probably not a popular thing to say, but that's what I think. I don't think safety is an issue. And if it was, then he and his wife wouldn't be standing on these corners doing the very same thing that they say is so unsafe for our panhandlers to do. And furthermore, let's not call them panhandlers. Let's call them beggars. Because beggars are what they are. They're begging for money, for food. And we've had beggars with us since the beginning of time, and we've always had beggars. And I don't know about you, but when I see somebody who's begging because they're hungry, I feel like it's our job to help them. I have enough to give. So thank you.
My name is Kenneth Groloff. I live on Donna One Mead. I wasn't going to come up here, but because of the last few people I started to. We talked to several people. One lady yesterday had stripes. So she felt sorry for, okay, our beggars, because she thought he was hungry. So she bought him a drink and a hamburger from a local fast food restaurant. He threw it on the ground. Another lady at Sam's said she had diapers, where someone bought her diapers. She wanted money. Instead, she threw the diapers in the drain ditch. And we had several people. Another guy said he's a homeless vet at Sam's the other day, two days ago. We talked about Russian wins. He's interested. I just want money. There are some people are hungry, because the job I work with, I've worked with some of them. But some people are just out to get what they can because they're too lazy to work. There might be some legitimate reasons, but the few we talked to, they're honest. They said, we just want the money. We don't want help or anything else. And I got to stop there.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Beto Gonzalez. I live in 113 Chantilly. And I'm glad that it was brought up about the video. I think that, at this point, we're trying to find any way to be able to let people know what's going on. I don't think it's making fun of anybody or making a derogatory term or, you know, comment about anybody. Social media has become a very, very big way for everybody, businesses, the city. The city has a Facebook page, you know, for everybody to know what's going on. And, you know, it's important that we know where these people are. And when I say these people, I don't mean any harm by it. You know, where we can find them and help them. Not only point out that some of them are taking shifts to be able to take the money that we work very hard for and that we take the time and the risk to be able to help them out. I think there's a lot of good people here in the city of Victoria. I've been living here for two years, and I have met an enormous amount, the majority of people with big, big hearts. And I think that what the end game here is, is to be able to help them find the help they need, and at the same time, help us make our city safer for our families. What's to say that my wife and my daughter are driving down the road, and they want to give a couple of dollars to a person? And the same incident happens when maybe a knife gets pulled? Or maybe they get beat? Or maybe a child walks in front of the car and they can see them? You know, that's my concern. I think that we really have to do something about it. And the way that Kevin is putting this out there, it really is a good way to inform everybody. I mean, if it was something bad, then probably the news won't be out there, you know, putting it on the TV. And, you know, I just really wish that we could all come to a conclusion to determine something that we can all do, all participate. And I'm willing to do whatever it takes. Thank you.
Citizens, communication still open? Is that everybody? I don't want to... Okay, okay. I recognize this young man.
I have Chad Schumak. I live at 405 East Convent Street. I just wanted to come up here and just talk about this panhandling situation, you know? And Kevin is my uncle, but, you know, and I do respect for what he's doing, and I also respect for, you know, Midcoast and everyone, you know, what they're doing. But there's a point to where for panhandlers that are... Some of them are homeless, yes, but you have to remember, some of them aren't homeless. Okay, and, you know, I think my uncle, him being on that median, he'd rather be on that median trying to stop this. And, you know, one of them pulled a knife, you know? And that was a panhandler, a homeless person. And yeah, he might have put people in danger or put himself in danger by doing that. But I think he'd rather be in danger that way than someone pulling a knife on him, you know? And also, I don't even know, I don't even think he had a light on. Just wanted to get that clear, you know, whenever he was doing that video. I don't even think he had a light on. But also, I don't think that he was trying to speak bad about these people that are out there. They didn't have to speak to him, you know? He had an open conversation with these people, and they didn't have to do it. I think they more wanted to do it, you know? Someone wanted to get their story out, whether it's true or false, whether they're actually homeless or whether they're not. They didn't have to do it, you know? And I respect what he's doing, and again, I respect for what the people are doing in the Midcoast, you know, for people that are actually homeless. But just again, keep in the back of your head that some of these people aren't actually homeless. This is a job. This is a profession for some of them. And I just wanted to get that clear. That's all I have to say tonight. Thank you all, all right?
Anyone else? Okay, don't see anyone getting up. We'll close citizens' communication.
Mayor, could I ask for a point of information?
Absolutely.
Can, in a future meeting, can we get... I've heard a number of comments about liability to the city. If something occurs, an accident or what have you, can we get a better legal interpretation of just a broad statement like that? If in fact, there is any liability?
I'd be happy to prepare a briefing.
I'm presuming that there isn't, but I'd like to hear it from our city attorney.
I can give you a broad generality now, but it's probably better to give you a more informed statement at the same time we're having this other discussion.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah, I plan on, just on this issue, real quick, take a little discretion. We'll talk about it at our next meeting. It will be on the agenda. And I do want to point out to those of you who are still here, you may not stay for the rest of the meeting. This man is the city attorney. He's hired. This is the city manager. She's hired. The rest of us are elected. It's our decision. These two give us advice. And they're paid well to give us that advice, whether we like it or not. I want to make that clear. The city attorney is giving his professional opinion. We have the option, and I know council knows that, to override that if we choose. So, you know, give your attention to us, contact your council members, share your thoughts. And I want to compliment you all. You did a great job coming up and speaking. I know it takes a little bit of nerve, but you did great. So thank you for doing that. And again, it'll be on our agenda. What night is that? Y'all have the...
Fifteenth.
The fifteenth. So y'all welcome to come back then. Okay, so we're going to move straight into E2, so we can get that one handled real quick.
E2 is an ordinance designating as a reinvestment zone the real property and structures to be located on a combined 8.29 acres?
Nope.
Nope? You'd rather do E1 first?
E2.
Farmers Market.
The Farmers Market.
What a resolution is.
E2. I'm sorry. I was looking at C2. And you stopped me, and I still didn't know why.
Yeah, wait a minute.
Okay, E2.
It's just the Farmers Market.
Yeah, that's right. E2 is a resolution designating the downtown Farmers Market at Dealey On Plaza as a Farmers Market in accordance with City Code Section 14-62C to allow for the sale of fresh fruits, vegetables, and other produce from an open stand or vehicle and declare ineffective date.
Second. Second, are there any questions about it?
Yes.
Question, Mr. Alvarez?
I'm a little concerned about a couple of things going on here. All the dates that are being occupied here through the months of April and all the way through October, and the potential for those dates not being available to other, for other events or any potential conflicts they may create with annual events that may be occurring at the Dealey On Plaza now.
The events that are currently on the calendar do not conflict with any of these dates. There's two dates in September that conflict with the Parks Department movie nights. But Kobe feels like the Farmers Market is during the day, and it won't conflict with the nighttime.
Even with setup and what have you?
Yeah, he's comfortable with that in September. He thinks it'll be fine.
Well, I guess my question was a little bit broader than that. Are there other types of events that occur on an annual basis, on Saturdays, that may occupy some of these current dates? That are, it just seems like a lot of dates. That's, they've been pretty active out there in the past, but I don't know if it was like once a month or twice a month.
Went back and looked at what has gone on over the last year. There's some weddings that have taken place at Dealey On Plaza. But, you know, we rent Dealey On Plaza out, so...
First come, first served.
It is. And I know...
Well, this isn't a first come, first served. This is just booking these whole dates right now, two nights.
Well, no.
Case closed.
Well, they would have to go through the rental. We're designating a Farmers Market, but Ms. Crandall understands she's still got to rent Dealey On Plaza, so for these dates.
She going to pay for all of these at one time?
I haven't talked to her about that. My assumption is if she wants to book them, she's here. She's nodding her head yes. If they want to book these dates, they can. So it's...
Yeah, I mean, I could see that.
Sure.
It just seemed like a lot of dates to occupy, it's a front loaded.
Same conversation with, I don't remember exactly who about that, about them being flexible. If there is an event that comes along, I remember, I know the weddings. I see those occasionally. It seems to me that it's possible to have shared usage down there. I don't know. I kind of think, she's shaking her head yes, that this will flesh out. You don't have any desire to displace other people of using it, because those are just more consumers. And I had hoped that that was what would occur here as over time, you know? Because the Farmers Market, from when I've used it, I've even... I mean, you guys could just be off on one section, one side, even get a street closure. I had encouraged some of that. I forget who I spoke to about this. So to put it, to be brief, it's going to work itself out, we hope. Is that a fair statement? And I don't know, you know, Mr. Alvarez, that may not satisfy you. I understand that, but...
I just bring everybody's attention to it.
Yeah, it's a good concern.
And there's no doubt that somebody, after it's rented for the Farmers Market, somebody may call, and they'll be told, well, it's already been rented.
Right.
And Ms. Crandall has said that if Parks wants to say, but, you know, if it's an event, you call and visit with her to see if it's something that's compatible with each other, then it'll work out, but...
There may be times that they're going to be canceled anyway because rain, weather, no one wants to come. Doing it for, was it three, four, five, six, seven months? I would think split it. Reserve the first three months, and then come back the month before the last month, and then reserve the next three months or four months. But to do all seven at one time was kind of like, whoa.
I had a similar question, because I noticed that a couple of these dates are already shown as market days. But I think somewhere in the report, it said that there would be shared or that they would be able to move around some. And so I figured that it would just work itself out, too. And I think the reason I chose to speak is to answer, you know, or to provide a counter to what you're saying, because one of the benefits of the Farmers Market is that you know where it is. And if you have to go looking for it because it keeps moving, you're not, it's not going to be as successful.
Yeah, I know we had a long discussion. Does you have a board? Food Bank does, but... Okay, that's who I was speaking with. And the, you know, everybody's competing for shade. Look at June, July, eh, you know? So it's, we had a long discussion about where you would situate down there. And I suggested go down there and look on other days to see where the shade is in the right hours and maybe work out to where you can just use this part. But that's for you guys to work out with Parks and Rec.
Absolutely. The, we are very eager to collaborate with anybody that wants to join us also. Mary Helen Barick with the Main Street Program is wanting to work with us to encourage more people to come down. We want downtown to be a family-oriented place where they can come from nine to one on Saturday, you know, have coffee, get your fresh produce. We're not going to take up the whole square. If somebody else wants to join us, we are not going to be, we're not going to say, no, you can't. And I feel like we're the public, we're the public, just like anybody else, that if they wanted to come in... they wanted to come in and reserve that in December, that they're allowed to. So I'm just asking for us to be allowed to do the same as any other.
This is just the enabling ordinance or resolution. We are gonna have to work through any problems we have. We could disable it the same way we enable it. I believe this is something worthwhile to do.
Absolutely, I don't, I don't stand against it here, I just, it's occupying a lot of dates, and there may be people planning weddings for April and beyond that on similar dates, and they may not have access to that.
Does she have work?
I would hope, and I think Robin and her staff and the Food Bank and the Farmer's Market would work with anybody.
Absolutely.
So I'm very confident about that.
Good discussion.
Just for clarification, in the minutes when both of you said you talked to Ms. Crandall, did you mean Ms. Cadel?
I'm Cadel, I said it.
Yeah, I don't think that's...
Crandall Cadel. Yeah. I just want to make sure so the minutes are right, and that there wasn't another player in here that we don't know.
I think I spoke with Mary Helen.
You did speak to Mary Helen. Because she is, she's approached us, and she is all on board, and so is, you know, other farmers. So we, we're open to working with everybody. We want those weddings there, we, you know, we're, we're good, we'll make it work.
Some of the weddings are on Sundays.
Of course, but they may be pictures, and they may be other, you know, events...
I don't think that's gonna...
You know, that, that might conflict in the future. Especially the ones that have already been annual, reoccurring, that's why I was asking. You know, some that, I know in April, that first Saturday is a, is a Cinco de Mayo or a festival for the local Hispanic Chamber.
And that's probably...
The following weekend in May is a Cinco de Mayo event for the Victoria Chamber. So those are already bookings that have been happening there on an annual basis.
And they're not on her calendar for Farmer's Market, yes.
Yeah, but there may be other things that I'm not aware of.
If there was a conflict, we didn't schedule, we didn't add those dates.
Okay, very good.
We take into consideration the...
The only other thing, Robin, and Robin knows me very well about this, I'd go back and review your bylaws and your guidelines, because you have a lot of typos and some verbiage in them that just, I won't belabor the point, but the verbiage is not...
Did you get the second set?
Yes, I did, and I reconciled it, including your bylaws, by the way. Anyway.
Can I ask a question? And I think it was mentioned, in reserving all of these dates, do they have to pay upfront?
Yes, ma'am, when I reserve, there's, I will have to pay for it, so...
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Okay. And we're aware of that?
Okay.
Any further questions? If not, if you ever say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we go into C1.
Ordinances. Item C1 is an ordinance amended Chapter 24 of the Victoria City Code related to fees to increase the environmental services curbside recycling fees from $1.28 per home per month to $2.92 per home per month, beginning March 1, 2016, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date.
Counsel?
Well, to get this discussion going, we'll move it up.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, motion second. So discussions and questions, I have a couple. I know Mr. Torres asked several, I wanted to get answered. I'll just go first, then. Mr. Torres referenced the size of the brush. Is there any change to that? I know we're supposed to cut it and stack it, four-foot lengths, is there...
Not since 2008. We haven't changed anything. Nothing in the ordinance has changed since 2008.
That's so that claw truck can pick it up?
No, I think what he's referring to is the smaller piles that we pick up by hand.
The yard waste?
The yard waste. The yard waste.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah.
And we, we did, in 2008, we did change up some ordinances in 2008.
Because we started picking it up by hand, the small pieces with that rear loader?
That's kind of when we split from using all rear loaders to going to automated trucks, and we started an actual yard waste route instead of mixing it all together and different things like that.
Okay. The cost of recycling, I guess, obviously, we're all gonna talk about that, and why, et cetera, so, counsel, you go ahead first, if y'all had questions.
Couple of things, could we make this ordinance not only have the second reading, but also split it and have a third reading in the following council meetings? Is that possible?
Yes, you can amend, make a motion to have this be only the second reading and not the third reading.
Is there any particular reason, or just more time?
Well, more time, I think. We may get some answers tonight, and I think some of the citizens are still digesting this, what we're about to do. Are we just up against the wall here about it?
I was gonna ask, does our contract say the fees will go into place...
March 1st.
March 1st, so if, if we don't adopt, then the city's gonna have to make up the difference in the contract.
That was just a question, I didn't make an amendment. But I did, I, I don't want to monopolize this, so I'll, I'll alternate with the other council members on questions. I had asked for some information about the estimated tons that we recycle a year.
About 3,400 tons a year.
3,400 tons?
Yes, sir.
That, that is recycled and is sent off to waste management?
That's what we actually pick up that leaves Victoria and goes to waste management. When it pulls onto their facility, it gets weighed on a scale, and then dumped, and then processed.
Daryl, that's historical, 3,400 tons. That doesn't, that doesn't account for the reduction of plastics three through nine and glass.
And the glass, no, sir.
So now that's going to significantly decrease?
The glass should significantly decrease the amount of tonnage.
Do you know what that number would be going forward?
No.
That's the hard question.
That's, that's a really hard question, because I, I can guarantee you, we're still gonna get some glass. The, the question is, is how much are we gonna get?
How much of the, of the recycle that we pick up, do you know, an estimate that goes to the landfill? This 3,400 tons that goes out, the total, the total amount, and that amount that goes to the landfill, do we have an idea?
We don't, because waste management would haul that to the landfill, it would be a small portion unless we haul them a, a load that's 60% contaminated.
Oh, so we'll separate that...
They'll separate that out, and they'll only take what needs to go to the landfill. Now, with the new contract, nothing will leave town that's more than 25% contaminated.
So you estimate that of the recycled, how, how much is that gonna be that's gonna come out in tonnage?
You know, our, our goal is to always be under 20%. That's our goal, and we did some public education and some things after the, you know, we were coming in at 40s in our audits, and we were back down to 20%.
So 20% times 3,400 right now, could give me, give me an idea roughly?
They'll, they'll still take it as long as it's under that.
Yes, but they'll separate out what's not recyclable, and they'll take it to the landfill.
Two more.
That comes off the total that we expected to get back.
What's troubling to me, and reading this in more detail, in the ordinance itself, there is the whereas, and there's the second whereas, if y'all will read that, counsel, if you'd like to, recover some of the increased cost. So what we're even suggesting here, even with the increase to the rate, to the customers, we're still going to be looking at a differential to recover whatever additional costs that we, the rate is unable to cover, is that correct?
Well, the, the way, we had to make some assumptions, finance and myself had to make some assumptions that we're gonna sell this for a minimum of...
$40.
$40. So if we drop below that $40, it should only be for a small period of time, because it's gonna only apply to that load, not to the next load that comes in, because each load will be counted separately.
But so we, but, but it's fair to say that there's maybe additional subsidy besides the increase in rate that we're talking about?
Let me put it this way. The assumption is that we're, over the, over the 12-month period, we're gonna have an average of about $40. Throughout each month, it might go up and down, up and down. So, in a given month, you might have, well, it's only sold for 35, yeah, there might be a little subsidy from the city, but next month, it might come the other route. But in the assumption, how we play out the numbers, we assume an overall average of $40. Otherwise, that you're gonna have to adjust the rates every month, and that's not, that's not feasible. And hopefully plays out.
We're clear on that. I mean, I understand, if you could tell the future, you wouldn't be working...
I won't be here.
Probably, but you, you did the best effort.
Absolutely.
Right.
We'll make sure we're clear there.
And, and we, we left ourselves a little bit of room, so...
Yes, sir.
We're hoping that, you know, we see some markets bounce back at some point, but we can't, we can't determine when that's gonna be either.
We're passing a cost through.
Now, there's another cost that, that we're gonna have to eat. Basically, it's, for example, Daryl finds a certain amount that are not to be recycled, and they're pulled out, and we have to take landfill, we're gonna eat that ourselves. But I, I see that's gonna be real minimal.
Well, here's the million-dollar question. You roughly said we had between a 60 and a 70% participation rate?
We're about 69.
But 100% of the customers are paying?
Correct.
So what's the difference? The 6,000 or 5,000 customers that aren't participating?
Then we're gonna, if, if, right now, there's not a way to opt out of the program.
Well, that's where I'm headed.
If we were...
For those that don't recycle, and even though have a can or whatever, or still, everybody's paying, where, where is the opportunity for them to opt out?
Same way there is to opt out, paying for a city street. Well, you know, me and I drive them all, we pay for them all.
Counsel would have to do is, is direct us that we're gonna do a subscription service.
That's correct, right.
And then we'd have to calculate what we think that subscription service would cost, and it's a, it's a rough, down and dirty number, and y'all are thinking $5 to $6 maybe, and that's assuming that you only lose that small percent. It, it could go up, so...
Subscription service is gonna be based on the number of customers, and that solely drives the rate.
Basically, what you got is your cost is semi-fixed in a way, so if you got less customers, cost per unit goes up. If you got more customer, it spreads it out. So back to Ms. Garrett's point, that's correct. It's, it all depends. If you decide to have only 69% and charge that, instead of having 164, you're looking at a higher number.
Absolutely. That's, that's what I was trying to get to, what would that number be?
Somewhere in the $5 to $6 range.
I'm sorry, $5 to $6?
$5 to $6, yes, sir.
Okay.
The last time we were here, they gave us this thing from Waste Management, I believe it was, and it talks more about the market, things of this nature that we can't control. Just like the price of a barrel of oil is down because the supply is up, are we part of a, victim of our own success? And actually, somewhat, that's true. There are many other factors. If you haven't read this, I'd encourage everyone to read it before next meeting.
Well, I'm certainly puzzled by the, by the comment that Plano is paying its citizens for its recycling.
Well, I don't, I don't believe, we need...
Are you aware of a city that makes money on recycling anywhere in the United States?
The only one I'm aware of firsthand is Corpus, but they've got a set deal that they're holding, they're holding, right. I did take a brief chance to look up Plano on the phone. They do have some options where you can call and set up to recycle clothing and set up different things. Most of those are not through the city, they are through private vendors. Their actual updated rate, the best one I could get was for 14, 15, and it was $2.62 per home.
I've looked at some rates that are all over the place. I don't know, maybe there might be some opt-in stuff, $10, I saw, you know, it, it's all over the place. But of course, we have the best, simplest, single stream. Our residents don't have to separate stuff into different color, you know, it's all just throw into one thing, and then it's taken away, so. It's difficult to compare, and then, and where they are in the life of their contracts, you know? We've had a sweetheart deal. Let's not, let's not get confused about that. $1.28 for the last five years is a great deal, and when, when Daryl and staff, y'all worked that contract out, Waste Management had that facility, they wanted feedstock, it was great addition, and I still think it is, and it's been successful. Our rates, what did you say, 69%?
69% is what we're using as, as of January.
Way above average, so, you know, I, I would just hesitate to have a knee-jerk reaction. It is a big increase, and I'm pretty sure there ain't one out of seven of us up here that liked the idea of increasing it, but we're not making money off of it, we're just simply passing the cost through to the company that requires it. The opting out, you know, that might be an option in future years, I, I don't know, I don't, just this one time, my personal opinion, no disrespect to you, Mr. Alvarez. Right now, I'm not ready to take that drastic of an action. I don't know.
I got the question, you know, to all of us, why do we recycle? Why? Is it just because it makes you feel good? Because environmentally, it's not the right answer, in my opinion. We, we're saving, what is it, for one year of recycling, we save 12 days of landfill space?
12 days of landfill space, yes, sir.
All right, so it takes 30 years, and we save one year of landfill space? Say if we had a landfill that had 100 years' worth of space, we'd save three years' worth over 100 years of recycling? And then it's gonna take more energy to produce the recycled material into something else than it would be to make something new?
Or to move it.
Or to move it. So what are we gaining by recycling? I don't see what we're gaining, and I don't know that I can support the increase. I think at the time that we did recycling, when it was a good commodity, it's a good idea, but we're not gaining anything by doing it.
What would you suggest?
Doesn't help the environment, and doesn't help our citizens financially.
Well, I think that, that may be the situation right now, and yes, it was different before that there was a market, but I think I've got a concern that, I think that recycling probably is something that's going to continue to be a necessary thing to do, and if we terminate our program, we're not gonna be able to get it started again.
Why not?
Because I think the unpredictability, I guess it's extreme to say we're not gonna be able to, but it's gonna be difficult. We're not gonna have this kind of success that quickly. Just people are gonna say, oh, yeah, they used to do that, but, you know, we're not gonna do it again. That, that's a concern I have.
My, my concern... 12 days per year. But what, what is the cost to citizens for, for our, our year subscription, or, or, what's, how much does it cost to taxpayers to fund recycling? 800, 900, 1,000? I mean...
The total cost with, before the Waste Management increases, or before, or after?
Give me the before, and then give me the after, the rate.
On a turnkey with depreciation, amortization, all that, $440,000.
So $440,000 before for 12 days?
For a year, yeah.
Give me the after.
The increase?
Yes.
391,000.
On top of the 40?
On 440, so you're looking about 831 a year.
So 830,000 for 12 days? To save, to save the landfill, 12 days?
Oh, to save the landfill, 12 days, I'll take a different look on that. That's, because that, you're talking about closure cost there. And post-closure, and it's an example, we just did 45 acres, I think, I got the number right this time. That costs about three point two million dollars to cap it. Thirty-year amortization on that, it's about a hundred and six thousand dollars a year. In fact, that three hundred and sixty-five, you're looking about two forty-seven, three hundred thou, three hundred dollars a, a day, twelve days, anywhere three and a half to four thousand a year? That twelve thousand dollars, I mean, twelve days equates, equates to about, I wanna say, close to four thousand dollars in closure costs, meaning that that's what's the cost in capping for twelve days. That's the best way I can take, take a look at that.
Take four thousand off, one hundred and thirty thousand.
I do have a further question along those lines. What did it cost us to run our recycling centers prior to curbside recycling? Does the city run recycling on Hoover and on Pine Street?
Oh, back then? We, we, that was a collection. I know, but that was just more of a collection.
That was just a collection facility?
Individuals, companies came and pick it up, and when they're upon, we have to pay them to come pick it up.
It was a lot. It was more than I would have thought.
If, if counsel wishes to get out of the recycling business, I would suggest we get out of the recycling business and not, and not for us to set up a drop-off spot again, because there's no commodity out there. We, Gilbert's right, we would be paying. You're really down to a couple of decision points. And, you know, I'm gonna back up a few years and remind counsel, because most of you were not sitting up here at the time. There was a public outcry for us to get into the recycling business, and we waited. Because, you know, we waited because we thought the cost was a little too high. Back when we first started looking at it, it was four, five dollars a month per household. And we waited, and we've got this deal with Waste Management, and we could do the single stream, which made it very easy for everybody to put all those, that product into that, you know?
One single container.
The cart, thank you, to, to send it out. It made it easy, I guess, you know, because schoolchildren are being taught to recycle, and so they're asking their parents to recycle. But you're, you're kinda down to a couple of points. We've adopted the contract amendment. If we do not go through with the fee, I, I cannot recommend us supplementing that contract, because it, I think it would be, what, thirty, how much a month?
It runs about thirty-two thousand a month.
A month. We, we just cannot do that. We might could do it for thirty days. I could not recommend long-term that we even attempt to do that, to subsidize what we, Waste Management is asking for. You could look at the subscription deal, but in the meantime, we've got to get to that point before we do that, or we just get out of the recycling business altogether. And, you know, counsel, that, that's your decision, and it's based on what your citizens are asking for. You know, again, when you've got sixty-nine, seventy percent recycling, that is indicative that it is a program that's supported by the public. But what, at what cost? And, and I don't think anybody, for years now, has ever said that recycling is, it makes good business sense, in a sense from a cost-dollar amount, because it, it is expensive to recycle. It goes back to that, people wanting to save, hopefully saving part of the environment, and at what cost? So that, it's kinda, you know.
Very well said.
Thank you, Darryl. And his evaluation's not even due any time soon.
There's, there's more measurement involved. It, no, it doesn't make sense. That's why municipalities do it. We're not here to make money. I mean, if it, you know, I, I know some of you guys would start a company tomorrow if you couldn't make money, but it is one of the most popular programs I have ever, I have received more, you know, desire for it five years ago. I know Mr. Hal Pascal was here then. And it is difficult to gauge the value of it. I mean, there's the dollar side, the twelve days. Then there's, well, all the trucks and the fuel burned to pick it up and carry it, I know that. I don't know how much of it ever ends up being reused. I don't know. It's, it's, some of it's subjective, some of it's objective. I just know that it's something, and it's an emotional aspect, most definitely. You know, I taught my kids to recycle. I just believe that we shouldn't make too hasty of a decision, excuse me, over this increase. I don't like it. I hate it. I hate the idea. But, you know, you look at our garbage rate, thirteen?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five. For how long now?
Two thousand and?
Ninety?
It's fifteen years or longer.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a long time.
Nineteen ninety-eight, two thousand and something.
Yeah.
We never, we've never raised it, so I just, I'm, I'm trying to say is, I think staff and counsel has done a very conscientious job of trying to keep these fees low. That won't satisfy everybody. There are people that just, hell no, under all circumstances, I'm. Mr. Hal Pascal, go ahead.
Well, I, I just wanted to point out, to get to curbside recycling.
Whenever you get a chance. No, whenever you get a chance.
Go ahead.
No, no, he acknowledged you.
To get to curbside recycling was a long, drawn-out thing. And I would hate to think that we would kill it in two weeks without enough public input. So whatever we do tonight, I would hope we would at least extend it, at least till budget time, to get this discussion more out there, because the feelings are very strong in the community for it. It doesn't matter if it makes sense or not. We used to get all of our water from the Guadalupe River until the thirties, when it was popular to believe that river water caused polio. Didn't matter that it was true or not. It was popular to believe. Cities spend a ton of money going to wells. Now we've got the wells, and we got the river, and we went back, main source still within the river. But it just shows you, it doesn't matter if it's true or not, it's still popular to believe.
Okay, I've had several calls from people that are upset about the rate increase. And my concern is, are we just putting something, waiting to do something that we should have done today, and just passing it on until the budget time, until next year, until the following year? Okay? We know we're gonna be paying more, so why do we wanna keep on adding to it? We could use the money elsewhere. That's my concern. Okay? We're just delaying a decision today that's gonna affect us tomorrow, and we're still gonna have to be faced with the same problem. Okay? That's just mine.
Can I make a motion to amend?
Absolutely.
I'd like to make a motion to amend to, for those that wanna opt out of the program may, may do so.
Everyone understand? Second, yeah?
Second.
I second the motion.
Okay, so you have a motion, a second to amend it, to allow for an opt-out program.
You're talking about rather than terminating it, just?
Correct.
Okay.
Is that what you?
Yes.
Okay, so you want a subscription-based?
I'm a subscription, yeah, for a better, lack of better definition. I'm sure we gotta do some math on that, Gilbert.
We need to.
But I don't know if it'll pass tonight.
The only comment I have is that if something like that happened, we need some time gap. There are some time factors involved, and just because we don't consider that, and we just turn the switch, then the city will subsidize them for a temporary time. When is that time? How long is it gonna take? If counsel is willing to do that, I'm just giving you the heads-up on that.
What I would suggest is, you know, if you pass the ordinance, and then you come back and say, change the program, and give us a new program in a month or two, and make it a subscription-based. If you don't pass the ordinance, and you, and you can still do that, except that we're gonna be out directly to subsidize it until that such time. You see what I'm saying? You're asking for a pretty drastic, and staff, correct me, pretty drastic change, which is fine. It's almost like we can't do that with this ordinance, can we?
Let me ask Darryl a question.
How quickly can we move to a subscription service with, set up with routes, billing?
Probably six months.
Okay.
So.
It'll be at budget time anyway.
Yeah, but I mean, do you wanna absorb six months? What, and deny this, or do you, that's the question here.
No, I mean, it's, 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 it's something, you know, for us to contemplate. I, I didn't know the ramifications. You know, if I have, if I have one pet peeve about this kind of decision-making, you know, we've had two weeks to digest this.
Exactly, my point. We should go a little slower.
You know, let's do it now, because we got a March first deadline. What's today? Excuse me?
March first.
And then it's impacting the contract, is it not? I don't like being put up against the corner. And I can tell you right now, given this kind of circumstances, I'm gonna vote against the entire ordinance, whether we pass the amendment or not.
Well, with respect to the amendment, you understand that that's pretty much a radical change, this entire?
It is, it is.
Do you wanna vote on the amendment? That's, you wanna withdraw that?
No, I'm not gonna withdraw it. Vote it up or down, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay, so now we're not voting on a rate increase, we're voting on going to a subscription system?
To add an amendment that would allow for an, an option of those customers that do not recycle to basically not subscribe.
But it would also include the rate increase?
That's just the amendment before we get to the rate increase. Right.
You're saying you'd vote for the amendment, but not for the item?
No. Yeah, we gotta vote, I don't know how we're gonna pass, what, I don't know why I'm gonna vote for the amendment.
If we pass, if we pass the amendment, then people have the option to opt out, but the ordinance itself has the dollar.
But I mean, if that fails, which I suppose it will fail, because, again, it was, it was a discussion. It's on the table.
Understand.
I'm not withdrawing it.
I'm sorry?
I'm not gonna withdraw the amendment, Mary.
That's fine, and I'm just asking counsel to be very careful about what we're asking staff to do. I have no, nothing against, and this is my opinion, discussing a subscription-based system, adding it to this. I have a serious concern about the workability of that. Again, because I'm concerned about making up that difference, this increase, because that's gonna come from something else. It's gonna come from some other program or something else we can't do.
I don't have a problem with his suggestion, it's just, I don't think it's germane to this, this ordinance.
Okay, so on the amendment, would, understood?
There's, there's no feelings about it, or hard feelings about it.
It's why we get paid the big bucks, right? Do you guys have anything to say on the amendment? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Two, four, all those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so, thank you, but we can readdress that again at a later time. Now we're back to the amendment as it's read.
I will say that, obviously, and I've received multiple emails and stuff of people that were pro and, and con from this. I, I think from an education standpoint, people have no clue. I mean, they recycle and think that we're saving a half a year. They, they think we're, we're saving a, a ton. And they don't know the, the full cost. And I think that that's, that's really part of this, this process, of going, where do we hit this? This tipping at, you know, whether it's, it's viable or, or not. Recycling is, is certainly an important thing, but I will say it's the third thing of the Rs. Reduce and reuse comes first. Recycle comes last.
That's exactly right.
And it probably comes last for a reason.
I bet you got that in email today.
No, I didn't. But it does. And from a, and it doesn't cost anything to reduce or reuse. And I'll just leave it like that.
I had a discussion with a wise man today, and you know, it was brought up, would the citizens rather recycle? Or would that eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars be better spent on roads? If you're asking them to choose one or the other, would they accept a tax increase on property? Or would they like to keep it as a utility rate? What does, you know? Is it a penny?
The eight hundred? It's more than a penny. But just to make sure we're on the same level playing, we're still gonna have to reevaluate our routes and operation logistics and everything else, so the whole, you won't get rid of the whole eight hundred. Okay, just making sure that's, that's noted.
For clarification of what could, what we could do, I guess I'll ask Darryl. So we could just tell Waste Management, effective now, we're not gonna recycle anymore, and we could walk away from the contract, there wouldn't be any penalties to us, anything like that?
Nothing at all.
A waiting period? We can terminate that at any time?
Yes, ma'am.
And then all we would have is, sixty-nine percent of the folks would have an extra cart of trash every?
At five dollars apiece.
Well, or, or they'd just have extra trash that they'd have to have picked up, depending on how much space there is in their trash carts now.
If, if we do away with the system, we would pick up all of the green carts. And then what would happen is, is if you wanna get an extra cart, then you would call in and order it, just as you do now on, on regular garbage pickup.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to amend, to extend it to a third reading.
Second.
Anyone interested?
Second.
Do y'all feel that that time is, I don't know what's gonna happen, what I'm inviting to our next meeting. I'm just warning you, I'd be honest with you. But, okay. Any discussion on extending it?
We would essentially subsidize for a couple of weeks.
We're gonna have to.
Is that what's gonna happen?
Starting today.
Okay. So whatever loads, we gotta make up the, okay? Let's give the public that chance. I hope you guys.
That's just a couple of weeks.
That's all I was trying to say.
Agree with me on that? It's a, it's a serious program to, to just nix all at once without a little bit more feedback. So all those in favor of the amendment to break the second, third reading into the two separate readings, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so we will have a third reading on this, and, okay.
Unfortunately, in the meantime, we're on the hook for the difference as of now.
For a couple of weeks.
Still have to vote on the ordinance.
Right, I know. Any, we're having such a good discussion there, Mr. Alvarez. Any, any other questions or anything while we're all here, while staff's here? Seeing, sir?
I think we brought it up last time on the first reading of this, and I think we need to seriously look at this program during budget.
We're planning, I, when Darryl presents his budget in June, we're planning on bringing back, if there's a need, y'all may not pass it, and we may be out of the recycling business. If there's a need, we will bring back all that in June during the budget.
One more point. I mean, it's only gonna increase this to about thirty-five dollars annually, is that right? Some change? For this service? Yes. When you split it out month by month and add it at the end, it's only about thirty-five bucks. Is that right?
That's correct.
So when you put it in that, yeah, when you put it in that, in that realm, you know, it's like, okay, we're paying thirty-five bucks. It's just, I think what shocks a lot of people is going from a dollar twenty-eight to two ninety-two. That's a significant, and we were blessed for those years. We have to congratulate.
Five years.
Yeah, everyone for that, but, you know.
Yeah, you know, having a.
I don't think it's that simple, though.
No, it isn't. It really isn't.
You know, I mean, when we talk about tax rate time, you say, well, it's only thirty-five dollars more a year.
A Coke and a hamburger.
Thirty-five there, thirty-five a year, and it keeps adding up, all of them add up.
The total bill keeps adding up on that, on water and waste, yeah, absolutely.
We're gonna be going, that way it's only twenty-four dollars a year. We're already paying, we're already paying twelve.
We added one, one penny on, if we came up here and added one penny on the, on the, on the property tax, we would.
The M and O socks.
Yeah, correct.
But my challenge is, is that the citizens, those that want it, want it, wanna pay six bucks a, a month? Absolutely, they can have it. We can keep ball rolling down the road. And for those that don't wanna pay that, then give them an option to not have to be part of it.
We'll have to see with that number, when we get to that point, comes up to six or whatever. Be careful with those numbers just yet.
Yes, I understand, that's just a.
Until we have an idea of how many people are actually gonna use it, it's gonna be hard to come up with a number.
And it'll be more expensive to administer without.
I'd like to look at how many people have been successful with a split system like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's similar to, if you don't have kids in public school, you still have to pay for public education. You still pay for roads that you may never travel.
They get their taxes frozen at one point, don't they?
I can tell you this, prob, that.
No, they're not.
Administering a subscription service is gonna be very complex and difficult. So it's always easier to do it single stream with everybody participating, so.
It's a completely different way of doing business.
We can do it, I mean, if that's the wish of the citizens.
If I don't put a green can out, you don't pick up my recycling, is that correct? I mean, if I don't have a green can to put out.
Now, currently correct, yeah.
Well, you know, but I still, that bill is, is still there. So you're gonna tell me that it's difficult, take that, I don't, I don't participate. You take my can away, and I don't get that.
No, it's, well, it's, it's, right now, we drive every street, you know, so it's going back and doing the routes.
The logistics.
The logistics, yeah, that's what I mean by that. No, it's, we can design a program, it's, and then, when do you let them opt in and out? We can do it, if that's what counsel wishes for us to do.
I think my point was, is just less efficient, if you gotta drive three miles, pick up two carts in one neighborhood, and that kind of thing. And I will wanna make one thing clear, everyone does benefit somewhat. There's some logic behind having a citywide system, that's why. Even though, and certainly that benefit is not, if it doesn't make economic sense, as has been said here, I understand that fully. That's why a municipality does it, and not a private company. But there is a benefit that everyone receives, even if you opt out, you still get a little benefit out of it, and that's kinda some logic there. So we obviously will debate that aspect a lot more during budget time. Okay, good discussion. Anything further? So I'll call, all those in favor of C1, raise your right hand. One, two, three. Those opposed, same side? We got, wait, wait. Let's wait. Okay, those in favor of C1, raise your right hand. We got four, those opposed, three, okay. We still have another vote, so you got the vote over there?
All right.
Before Darryl sits down, can I, would you talk about the question that was raised about putting the plastics out to sun and how we have to cover? Do you mind explaining that?
Yeah, with the landfill, what happens is, we have a permit from the state, and trash has to be covered daily. So at night, before we leave, by permit, and this is not just ours, this is all landfills, it has to be covered in some way, shape, or form. If we're working in a small area, let's say it's really rainy, then we have approved a tarp. It's a big tarp that's pulled by a dozer over the trash. But you have to make all efforts to cover at night. If we've got, working in a big area like now, when it's dry, we have to cover with dirt, because we can't cover the whole area with a tarp. It serves multiple purposes. And one, we have to satisfy the permit. Two, we have to try and keep animals and things like that from coming out there, developing any types of diseases or anything like that. We also have to do our best to keep anyone from climbing the gates and scavenging through the trash. We don't, we want to try and make sure that people aren't out there digging at night, looking for food, looking for people's private information, looking for things like that. So there's multiple reasons that we can't leave it out. The problem with, kind of, the recycling aspect is you've got companies that have been holding on to plastic like that, setting in pallets somewhere, waiting for the recycle market to come back. When they get depleted by the sun, they're no longer recyclable. They end up going in the trash. So there's kind of a fine line to walk there. But our reasons for having to keep that stuff covered at the landfill is based on permit cleanliness and our ability to control what goes in and what comes out of there.
If you've never been to the landfill, it's an impressive operation, I'll just say that.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. Good discussion. C2?
C2 is an ordinance designating as a reinvestment zone. The real property and structures to be located on a combined eight point two-nine acres, located on Loop 463 and Salem Road, establishing the boundaries of other matters relating thereto. Determining the City of Victoria intends to enter into an agreement for tax abatement, agreement with Stimson and Sons Incorporated, Doing Business as Ashley Home Store, Victoria, Texas, and BPEC Enterprises, LLC, Doing Business as Ashley Home Store, Corpus Christi, providing for severability, declaring an effective date.
Make a motion we approve item C2.
Second. Okay. Council, any questions? I see Mr. Fowler's there to answer any, if you have them.
You know what are gonna happen to the deer?
I'm sorry, what's that?
What's gonna happen to the deer?
Oh, well, I think they're already gone, by the way.
I would think they are.
I'm not sure. I think they are.
I'm here to help. There appears to be a housing development adjacent to, or...
That's just, just, just adjacent to this piece of property. That's correct. That's correct.
That's what I saw recently when I...
Salem Crossing, I think it's the name, Rex's Horse.
A nice piece of land.
Did you want to give us synopsis, Mr. Fowler?
Well, I did want to say, Mr. Mayor and council, we have done some analysis on this request. And just to give you some, some ideas, that this could potentially be up to a five-year phase-in tax abatement. Based on your guidelines and criteria, two-point-five million dollar investment could qualify for up to five years. If it does qualify for the five-year abatement, they could save, over that five-year period, about seventy-six thousand dollars from the city and the county. From the city alone, that would be about forty-five thousand dollars over those five years. They would still pay about fifteen, almost sixteen thousand during that five-year period. It would phase out from ninety down to forty-five percent and then be gone. Now, our guidelines and criteria call for a taxable investment. So if the assessed value ultimately comes out to be something less than two hundred, less than two million dollars, then the phase would drop down to four years rather than five. And that, Mr. Gush and I have talked about this. We think we can handle that in the contract phase, to leave the contract flexible enough to wait until the first year assessed value. Because sometimes your investment, you may invest two-point-five million, but it may not actually end up on the tax rolls for two-point-five million. So...
Any further questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, Mr. Fowler.
Thank you all.
Mayor and council, on the next two items, C3 and C4, I'm offering substituted versions, which I've passed out to you. As, I think I've talked to each of you about the substituted versions, there was an incorrect date in the final recital paragraph that, the final paragraph numbered five, right before the bold line. That date had to do with the notification to public school districts. And the correct date is January twentieth on both of these resolutions. So on both of these, I'll be reading the substituted version. That is the only change in each of them. Item C3 substituted reads, "An ordinance providing for the extension of certain boundary limits of the City of Victoria, Texas, and the annexation of territory consisting of approximately sixty-eight point nine-two acres of land, adopting a service plan for the territory to be annexed, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for publication and savings, and declaring an effective date."
C3, okay.
Well, we did not, didn't we?
Okay, we require a public hearing on C3?
Yes, we do.
I thought there was no public hearing on C3.
Okay. Anyone would like to come forward and speak regarding C3 only? Now is the time, I think our one interested party already did.
This is the Lake Forest annexation.
Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing on C3.
This is an ordinance that pertains to Mr. Davis's.
C3.
C3.
Entertain a motion? Everybody on the same page? I'm sorry.
I move to adopt.
No question.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt in no second, yet?
Second.
Okay, no second.
So we have a conversation. This one is for Mr., the sixty-eight point nine-two?
Right.
Is Mr. Davis's property?
Any discussion, anybody? And I think, I'll say this, I think Mr. Davis made it clear that he would rather he continue to annex incrementally as he has in past years. You know, that we feel that takes a little extra staff time or whatnot. But I don't have a problem with that, if that's what he prefers. So I don't have any trouble not annexing this at this time. So just saying. Anybody else want to add to it?
I'd like to make an amendment to remove Mr. Davis's property from there at this time.
I think all we have to do is vote against it. So if that's...
Well, there was a... He wasn't the only piece of property there, was he?
I thought he was the only one on the picture.
The city has something in there.
The city does.
Oh, okay.
The next one, we have two separate ones. The next one is not. This is just his property, correct, staff?
It includes the city.
They have five point one-four acres?
Five acres for the city.
I'm sorry. Okay, let's...
But...
Let's get back to his motion first. Real quick, let me hold.
Second.
The motion is second to remove specifically, y'all keep me straight here. Which area?
The DGMP.
Let me point out that that belonged to the City of Victoria. That's all, that's all Mr. Davis's. Can we pause for a minute and think about which one of those tracks is coming up next?
Mr. Mayfield?
Maybe we can annex it.
Let me, let me help you.
Please do.
There is five point one-four. It's the very top line on page five of your staff, of your service plan there, that is owned by the City of Victoria. It is Ball Airport right of way.
But it does not, it would not be contiguous at that point? Or would it still be contiguous?
No, it's contiguous, isn't it?
If we didn't annex, Mr. Mayfield.
I don't have my map in front of me.
I don't think you need to exclude the city property. If you don't wish to adopt...
It is contiguous.
But I think you can just not...
But you can exclude it, but it is contiguous to an existing...
It doesn't matter. We don't have to.
I didn't think it was contiguous if you didn't do the rest.
If you don't wish, just, you know, yeah. I don't think it's...
Good point.
Hold on, everybody.
I don't think it's necessary to exclude the city property from the annexation. You just exclude the, vote down the ordinance if you don't wish to.
But we have a first motion and a second to amend, right? Over here, y'all had...
But my question is, which is the next property of these tracks that are coming up? That we're gonna see in a few weeks or months for annexation?
You're gonna see, I have an annexation petition I received this week from Mr. Davis, because he submitted another phase, so we'll have another small acre annexation.
Which one of the tracks are listed here?
I don't know which one of these is, that, the... I can tell you on the map where it is, but it's a, I don't know if it's ten acres.
We'd have to have a whole new meets and bounds for it.
We'll have a whole new, that's, that's part of the, what's interesting to me is, we, it continues to be engineering fees to create new meets and bounds descriptions for each of these. But yes, we've, we've received a new petition that, you know, if this is approved tonight, then we would hold on to it. If it's denied tonight, then we'll be coming back to you at your March fifteenth meeting with a resolution to accept the petition for the next phase of seven to ten acres, whatever it is. It's sixteen lots, that's how I know it has.
So it could be a combination of a couple of these tracks?
Yes, sir. It's not, it's not specifically just one of those.
Those lines would be totally...
It cuts across.
Yeah, it'd be reconfigured. I understand, okay.
Can I ask you?
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayfield, a couple of things. Mr. Davis said that he would have to destroy some habitat. He'd have to cut down some trees. He asked about brush piles. And then he's also talked about city taxes. And so I, if you could answer a couple of those, and additionally, does he have this on ag value that he, his city taxes?
I'm not aware that it's under ag value. There's nothing in the appraisal records that show any of his properties in ag value. So I'm not sure what the answer to that question is. I'm not aware of why a piece of property coming into the city limits would require a tree to be cut down. So I don't know the answer to that. I don't know what he was referring to in that question either.
Has more to do with burning on my...
Burning brush, there is a, there is a ban on that. However, our fire marshal has worked with property owners that are on the outlying areas and has allowed, it's at his discretion, people to have a burn permit inside the city limits. So I don't know that, it's, it's not a complete no on the burning of the brush.
Did you, I saw some hands over here.
Well, I was gonna pull my amendment. If it doesn't change and it's not contiguous, there's, there's no sense. It's all or none.
We'll just vote up or down on the whole thing, all right? Is that, okay, who gave the second? Y'all, you agree with that? All right. Okay.
So that is withdrawn, motion to amend.
The motion's withdrawn, we're just back to as presented?
I would, I would like to say that Mr. Davis, like any other small businessman, trying to build subdivisions, just at uncertain times at the moment, this would put an additional three thousand dollars a year burden on it. Slightly uncertain times, I don't know that, you know, you can eat an elephant, but you gotta do it one bite at a time. And that would be my concern. Eating elephants, Mr. Fowler? I'm not particularly tasty about it myself, but...
Barbecue.
I don't, I, I'm gonna say something I probably didn't anticipate saying, you know, but, Mr. Davis, I respect him as a builder, and he came here at the last meeting. I did not appreciate, I felt he cast dispersions on us with some of his remarks at the last meeting. Didn't really appreciate it. You all received a letter, you know, answering some of those questions. I'm satisfied with that. I make my decisions without emotion as much as possible, it's just business. If, if he would have come up to that last meeting and said, I would rather you not do this, that'd have been enough for me. I'm just saying. I just want to say how I feel about it. Given even some of the things that were said, and we got good answers to it, I'm satisfied. If he doesn't want them all annexed right now, I'm fine with that. If he wants to do it incrementally, I understand. Even if staff believes that maybe he's spending more money in the long run, that's his money. It does cost staff a bit money, a time and effort, I understand, to do this a little at a time. I also believe, you know, the economy is a little bit different now. In sixteen lots, it may take him five years to fill those. Things have kind of stopped. I hope it all turns around soon. So having said all that, I'm fine. If he doesn't want to do it, I can support that. So, in this case. Council, y'all have any further to add to it? Okay, if not, C3, right? Sorry, I'm so confused. And all those in favor of the annexate?
That's what I was gonna say, would you clarify?
So if you vote yes, you're in favor of annexing it, correct?
That's correct.
If you vote no, it's a, no, don't annex it, okay? So all those in favor of C3, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Two? All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay. Is it clear? Is that two oppositions, you got that, so it fails? All right. C4.
Mr. Mayor, before we go on to C4, if we could go back to C2, you are correct, we did not have a public hearing on that item, and it is required. So if we could go back and, just for the purpose of having a public hearing on C2, and then if there are any comments in the public hearing that might, that might cause a council member to want to change his or her vote, because everyone voted in favor of that item, any person can make a motion to reconsider, and we can then put it up for a vote again.
I totally understand that, and thank you. And I realized it after the fact, I apologize. Usually you guys catch me when I do that, so... It's y'all's fault, too. No, we want to do this right. So with respect to that, we're gonna open a public hearing on C2, which was the reinvestment zone item that Mr. Fowler spoke about. Anyone like to speak to that specifically?
I want to blame it on C1.
Blame it on C1. Okay. Well, we do want to respect everyone, so I see no one coming forward to, so I'll close a public hearing on that, and our vote, original vote will stand.
Yes. That takes us to item C4, the substituted version of which reads, "An ordinance providing for the extension of certain boundary limits of the City of Victoria, Texas, and the annexation of territory consisting of approximately fifty-four point two-three acres of land, adopting a service plan for the territory to be annexed, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for publication and savings, and declaring an effective date." This is a first reading, so we will need a public hearing.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing on C4. Anyone would like to speak to that item only, please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll close that public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
Will we adopt C4?
Second.
Okay, the motion is second. Any discussion on this one?
Is this land right now currently ag exempt?
Yes. Well, some of it is. Now, I don't think...
Right, the, the majority of it, the forty-six.
The majority is, yes. I don't think Mr. Schmitz is.
Didn't hear from any of the property owners?
Not to my knowledge, no, sir.
Letter or nothing, phone call?
Jared's shaking his head, that's correct.
Okay. Any questions, discussions? If not, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay. One opposition, correct. All right, our consent agenda.
There are four items on the consent agenda, which will be approved by a single vote tonight. They are, first, the approval of amendments of the special joint meeting with the Planning Commission on February eighth, twenty sixteen, and the regular meeting of February sixteenth, twenty sixteen. Second, a resolution appointing a new member to the Library Advisory Board to fill a vacancy and declaring an effective date. Third, a resolution reappointing one member and appointing two members to the Victoria County Public Health Department Board of Health and declaring an effective date. And fourth, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an easement agreement with Victoria Electric Cooperative Incorporated, granting VEC the necessary rights to install electrical service to the US-77 lift station at thirteen four oh six North Navarro Street, and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Those items passed. E1?
E1 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement with Victoria County related to the maintenance of the Lone Tree Extension Road and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Any questions on this one?
I do. Does this street construction match any of our approved details for street?
Yes, it's being built to our street standards.[1549.88]
Our meaning to the city, not the county.
The city's street standards, yes, not the ETJ standards.
Really? That, that one in Exhibit A?
It's the rural standard.
But I thought we agreed on the base, that there, is Ken here? Oh, thank you, Ken. I know Lynn's not here, so.
It's being built to the rural standards and a little bit above. The county commissioner elected to put the GeoGrid in lieu of the stabilized subgrade and then he's putting in the limestone base and a two-course prime and a two-course seal, so he's putting it in very well.
It's better than the rural standards.
A little bit better, yes, it is.
And we, and that's what we negotiated out on the build, build out of the street.
Why would we accept a street that doesn't meet our city standards?
That he would have, they would have to install curb and gutter, underground storm sewer, and that would be a pretty expensive undertaking for a-
But you're going to put this all on the citizens when it comes time in 10 years that we're going to take care of it.
Well, let me, let me interrupt you. I don't think it's fair to talk to, to address Ken that way, Mr. Bocknight. Y'all agreed in a previous resolution to agree to this, so, and the standard was accepted back then. This is to allow the maintenance on it, so I, and I don't remember the date.
During that discussion, we said it was going to be the city's standards.
I can't, I don't know what was said back then. I know that we are satisfied with the base of the road and how it's being built. So, if council does not wish to go, well, I think they're already starting to build the road out there based on the previous agreement.
What is Lone Tree right now?
Lone Tree.
What is Brentwood right now?
There's nothing there.
That's the extension part, it's nothing there.
Yeah, yes.
But Lone Tree is considered a residential street or-
It's a thoroughfare.
Oh, it's going to be-
It's a collector street in that section.
There's a lot of industrial there.
It's a collector street.
Commercial, heavy and commercial.
Not this stretch, but the existing-
So why wouldn't the Lone Star Extension, I mean Lone Tree Extension be a collector street standard?
Well, besides, besides the ditches and the drainage.
Besides the ditches and the drainage.
Yeah. I think the base is, though, right, Ken?
Yes, that section of Lone Tree Road from where it's going to end to across Sparkman and in that general area, we're in, we just bid that project and we're going to reclaim, rehab and overlay that section. No curb and gutter, but we're going to rebuild it to a better standard than it is now.
This exact standard right here?
Uh, pretty close, except we're putting hot mix on ours.
That's what I'm saying, why wouldn't this extension be the exact same road?
Does city limits or not?
It is with the exception of the hot mix.
The new portion, right up to the edge of Brentwood?
Right. We're not, we're, we're not, to build the street, to every city standard would involve curb and guttering every road that we rehab and overlay. And that would be a very expensive proposition.
I think we're trying to make this work to help those citizens, which is mostly, you're talking about, you're not talking about commercial-
There will be some commercial trucks on that. There will be, especially-
They don't do that in their own city. Look at Glasgow.
Is it, is it kind of like when we go rebuild an existing city street now that doesn't have curb and gutter? Sometimes we just rebuild them to the way they are. We don't put curb and gutter in.
Correct, that's right.
We had to abide by that. We simply would never build a street. And, and I understand where you're going, but I'm just saying, I want to, if that helps clarify this some, that section of Lone Tree that we're rebuilding will have heavier commercial traffic than this new section. It's just a secondary residential entrance and exit, true statement there.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure-
Well, I mean, it's, it's got some for commercial.
It will be opened up for development, probably. It's going to make that whole, that land in that area valuable for development. And I think, is it Sparkman Industry that's out there?
Yes.
That probably will end up with an entrance owned along Tree. So they will be carrying some industrial traffic on it, so.
And how would it look after 10 years when we accept the road?
I can't-
I don't think that's the issue tonight. I, I don't disagree with you, but I don't remember the discussion last time.
They're going to do some, the part of that-
Yes, it was the city's standard and they said yes.
Part of the agreement, too, with the county is that they will do some point repairs on that road before they turn it over to us.
They're doing maintenance for a period of time according to this.
Yes, and they'll do the maintenance and do any point repairs, so.
I would like to point out that we paved Glass, Ball Airport Road, right in front of Ball Airport, not that awful long ago, and it's open ditch. There's no curb and gutter.
What's the problem with the open ditch?
There is, well, not really. I mean, it could have been done that way. Also, Glasgow's been overlaid and so are a bunch of the streets in that whole subdivision there were done eight or nine years ago. More than that, probably closer to 10 or 11.
Is in 2001 when Northcrest was all redone.
Northcrest and all that, but all that's open ditch and-
So, well, Mr. Bocknight said he didn't have a word about the open ditch barring the curb and gutter. How far off are we?
Just the hot mix. That'd be, that'd be the difference between what the section of county is building and what, what we would typically build on a rehab.
Is this considered a 30-year road or a 50-year road the way it's designed?
I'd consider it with proper maintenance, you can get 30 years out of it. With the base, with the GeoGrid and the base section, it's on there.
Because our standard's different for a 30-year road.
Our standard is for a curb and gutter street, it's nine and a half inches of base. And, and the reason that occurred was constructability of that section to get that, to get some base under that curb and gutter. And nine and a half inches allowed that with the hot mix.
I just feel like with all the issues we have with roads, we're going to let one be built that doesn't meet something that we would typically do.
If we were doing a road with open, yeah, open ditches.
This is what we would do.
The base would be exactly what we're asking them to do. That with the GeoGrid and, and, so they're building the base exactly like we would build our own if we were not doing curb and gutter.
But we just said Lone Tree now has, okay, the base is the same on Lone Tree that we're doing that portion?
When we rebuild.
It will be.
It will be, yes.
And the top gets a hot mix?
Is that where we're bidding on Lone Tree?
Yes. It will, it will get hot mix.
So, so there's your difference.
So we're letting them off the hook for hot mix?
It's not the base.
It was a decision we made years ago that we found out we could do hot mix at almost identical cost to the tar and gravel surface. And it holds up as good or better. There's six of one half dozen, the other, yes, the other's easier to go back and re-top.
All right. Not to get, go down that road and discuss the streets. It's all about base. Hot mix is just a wear surface, that's all it is.
Hot mix gives a better ride.
I, I, I can, I sympathize with Councilman Bocknight, you know. I don't remember what was said at the last meeting, but I'm going to be real honest to you, I seem to be doing that a lot tonight. I don't like letting the county off the hook on anything. Okay? And I'm going to tell you, I had residents from this neighborhood calling me and it wasn't fun, expecting the city to rescue them. You know, they don't pay city taxes, property taxes.
From their own folly.
I understand.
I just want to make sure, with my questions, that we get a road that we would accept ourselves building within the city because it is going to be our road.
Yeah.
And we're going to take the maintenance on it after it's been used for 10 years.
And that's why the agreement that council adopted, and I don't remember the date, I'm sorry, we were concerned about the base and that's why the base was negotiated to the standard that we negotiated in that contract. And we would not allow him to build what he would build out in the county. Because he does not use that same standard that we use in the city on the base.
Yeah.
Okay. I guess I just burned indulgent, I'm sorry if I finished your question.
Oh, no.
I didn't mean to point the question at you.
The decision is, that actual decision's been really made already and so, yeah. Okay.
So we're, I guess we're saying this is a little bit more beefed up than what an ETJ street would normally have to be.
Yes.
That we did insist on, on more.
I'm going to have county commissioner mad at me tomorrow, probably. That's okay. All right. Any further discussion on E1? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, okay. Thank you. E3?
Item E3 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to extend an agreement with the Cersei Dynex Corporation to provide software and support and continue off-site hosting for the Victoria Public Library's Catalogue Management System in the amount of $36,019.71 for year one of a five-year term and declaring an ineffective date.
I'm just here to answer any questions.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Are there questions? As Ms. Dana is ready to answer them? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, okay. Thank you very much. City manager reports.
And Dana has the first city manager report to kind of give over her year-end report and talk about her strategic plan and her report was attached to your agenda, so.
Good evening, counsel. As Charmel has said, this evening I wanted to talk about the Victoria Public Library's 2014-2015 year four update of our five-year strategic plan. And it is available in your packet. Just to give you an overview of what has happened this last year at the library, we've had 225,000 people walk through our doors, 365,000 items checked out, and our website was visited 180,000 times. The library continued to focus on our participation this past year in community events and with community partners. One of our biggest successes was our work with United Way's Day of Caring and the library's Back to School Bonanza, which happened last August. We had about 500 children and parents who came out and attended that event. And another big event this last year, we had over 1,000 people attend our two-day gingerbread housemaking event in December. Both examples of us working with different community partners. As a reminder about the strategic plan, it was developed in early 2011 through the work of a community planning committee. And in addition to this community committee, we gathered feedback from the library staff, the advisory board to the library, and the Friends of Victoria Public Library Board. They helped us identify and prioritize the services that the library provides. And five main areas of service were identified and goals were developed. This complete plan was approved by the library advisory board and put into place beginning in October of 2011. And updates have been provided to you or to this council each year and to our board and it is available through our website as well. So the library's five main areas of service, as identified by the plan listed on page three of your report, they include creating young readers with a focus on early literacy for children ages zero to five, understanding how to find, evaluate and use information, information fluency for users of all ages, celebrating diversity and cultural awareness, satisfying curiosity, lifelong learning, and stimulating imagination, which includes reading, viewing and listening for pleasure, both focusing on our adult users and our teens and children between ages six and 11. So on page three of the document, there are goals and specific priorities listed. And so, for example, on goal one, there are five different goals listed, 1.1 through 1.5. And on that table, I've identified the trends for each of the priorities. So you're going to see over to the far right, a column that says trend. And we have either where we are meeting our goal as a plus, exceeding our goal as a plus-plus, or we have an opportunity to improve, which is listed as a minus. So in many of these areas on page three, we've continued to exceed our goal, for example, in the areas of storytime attendance, preschool participation in summer reading, technology training in classes, the checkouts of popular books, DVDs and music for both adults and children, and our number of community partnerships. Some of the areas in which we've exceeded our goal include increasing attendance at our storytime programs. We offer seven storytimes weekly in our building and provide storytime programs at a different Head Start location each week. We've seen a 49% increase in attendance at storytimes as compared to attendance during fiscal year 2010-11 when we started the strategic plan. We've had a 7% increase in the number of preschoolers who complete our summer reading program when comparing again to summer of 2011. And in this area of information fluency, we've had a strong year because we implemented our Books and Bots Grant and I have reported briefly on that to the council before, a grant we received from the Texas State Library. And we've continued our partnership with the workforce of the Golden Crescent. So with the addition of teen and children's summer robotics clubs, workshops, hands-on programs with several schools, we've had a 200% increase in the number of adults and children attending technology-related classes and programs when compared to attendance in 2010-2011. And lastly, we've had a 26% increase in checkouts of popular adult fiction, DVDs and music, and 118% increase in the number of juvenile media items. That's again DVDs, children's music, some of our children's, what we call launchpads, which are kind of a handheld iPad sort of product. So really strong increases in those when compared to fiscal year 2010-2011. So overall, a strong year. But we still have some items we want to focus on during our last year of this current plan. Last year, we further addressed how to best meet our goals by reorganizing our staffing structure and hiring someone to oversee our programming department as outlined on page four. And our opportunities for improvement. We have already seen some improvements in the quality and quantity of our programming, with one example being the full week of programming we are planning for children and teens during spring break. Our participation in Steam Fest, which is tomorrow, we are partnering with the Children's Discovery Museum in Main Street, Victoria, and expecting a large group of schoolchildren to be coming through the library tomorrow. And we participated two weeks ago on the Gen Text Day with the University of Houston, Victoria. And I left a list of spring break programs at each of your places today, so you're aware of those events as well. So on the back page, that page four again, of the report, I've listed priorities for year five. We're going to continue to look for ways to meet our goals in the areas of increasing participation in our summer reading program by elementary-age children, increasing checkouts of our children's print materials, trying to find ways to continue to expand and develop our current building so that it's serving our community's needs, and we're going to be developing a new strategic plan to lead us forward for the next three to five years. So I'm open to answering any questions.
Regarding your, I noticed a lot of work with the schools, so you have a specific contact just at VISD or is it other schools? You just, some of this sounds like it's new.
It is, with this new programming position that we basically took the, a department and divided it in half and hired someone specifically to be over programming. She's made some real inroads, I think, into developing some partnerships in the schools that we've struggled with in the past or have tried different things that we felt like didn't work well and have stopped doing. And so, I mean, I'm excited. We've got a really cool program coming up at the end of March about the orphan trains that brought orphans into Texas. And she had a really good contact at Patty Welder, so they're bringing a classroom of kids over during that afternoon to come to that event. So it's things like that that we're trying to work on, providing those events where we know we're going to have an audience. You know, you have that school audience that can come in and, and that's key. That's one of the key things, is we can provide some really, really strong, good programs. But if we don't have that audience, there's no reason to continue that. So we're, we're trying to make sure that we're providing what, you know, our community needs and where we have an audience for those events.
So will you be bringing a budget item for this expansion of the outdoor area space?
We're a little too early into the budget process for her to answer yes or no. She, she would like to bring that forward.
You reckon? Well, I mean, 2016, I assume we're talking 2016, 17 budget?
It will be in her budget, now whether it gets recommended for funding.
Very good.
It's a little early, so.
Well, I see a plan has been developed and I'm, I'd like to see more, I see a picture here, so it begs the question, show me more. And then we've reconciled with our comprehensive plan, any issues there for the library? Was that even discussed in our discussions with the comp plan?
There was a break mentioned of the library.
I don't know, to make sure it reconciles with your, once that's approved, that it ties into what your next three to five years look like?
Right, yes, yes. And definitely I would be looking at that comprehensive plan if there's anything that is recommended that would be included in our strategic plan review and in developing our goals.
And I'd like to comment a little more on the pavilion. It, it's a great idea. It's a matter of balancing priorities on funding that. Dana has done a real good job of seeking grants to pay for that. She has asked the Friends of the library to consider paying for that. At this point, they have turned us down, but I think there's maybe some additional meetings on that, but, you know, so continue to look at that effort, too, on how to fund it.
I would say that I was recently in a very large metropolitan downtown library and it was extremely depressing. Our library is absolutely wonderful compared to that. I'm not going to say where I was, I'll tell you later if you want to know. But our library is amazing, so thank you.
Thank you.
One more comment before she sits down, when she talks about her new employees. She moved FTEs around. We did not add a new FTE to her budget last year. You may remember going through the budget process, but it's how she's main, I guess, allocating her employees within the library.
Right. So if you look at that chart under opportunities for improvement, there's nine positions and there's nine positions. So it was just a restructuring, moving around positions.
Thank you, Dana.
All right, thank you.
So I think the next one is Andrew, and I see Sheri's in the audience, and they're going to talk about the Great Warrant Roundup.
Mayor, members of council, pleased to give you an update tonight on the 2016 Great Texas Warrant Roundup. This is the 10th annual statewide event this year, although the city's been doing warrant roundups for many years prior to this. The event officially begins this Saturday on March 5th and runs through Sunday, March 13th. And during that time, the police department is going to be actively working any outstanding warrants and anyone with an outstanding warrant can be arrested at any time and any place. And obviously, due to the importance and implications of that, we're trying to get the information out to as many people as possible. So a couple of different avenues. The city mailed notices to approximately 3,000 individuals back on February 19th. In addition to that, something new this year to the roundup is the use of digital billboard advertising around town. You may have seen as you're driving around town. That actually began back on February 8th and has run for four consecutive weeks and that'll be concluding this week, notifying individuals. And a special thanks goes out to the communications office. Josh Garrett did an excellent video that we'll actually show for you here. That's actually being used on social media and different public service announcements. So hopefully we can do a real quick video for you guys.
Beginning on March 5th, the Victoria Police Department will be arresting those with active warrants. Do you have a warrant out for your arrest? Do you have any unpaid traffic tickets? Find out at municipalonlinepayments.com/victoriatx. All you have to do is click on Municipal Court and then click on the name tab. Finally, just fill out your name and date of birth. If you do have a ticket, pay it at the Municipal Court by March 4th or risk being arrested during warrant roundup. Go to municipalonlinepayments.com/victoriatx to find out.
And other than the long website address that we're going to work on for next year, that's a mouthful to put out, but if anyone feels they might have an outstanding balance, again, you can come into the Municipal Court located here in this building. Again, that website is municipalonlinepayments.com/victoriatx. You can link through the city's website to get to that. We're going to work on a, maybe a little catchier URL for that for next year, so it's a little easier to get out there. But again, yes, Sherry is with us, and I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge her and her staff for all their hard work, as well as Officer Soto here. He's been out pounding the streets for the warrants. And I know it's been a little hectic, and I know they're going to get crazy, I guess, leading up to this weekend and then all through next week, so.
It's crazy now, so.
It's crazy every time, except for when I walk in, so.
Yeah, and the phone doesn't ring.
Well, thank you. I know that you are dealing with folks that sometimes aren't happy. But it's something we have to do, so thank you for that. I know it's got to be a little stressful at times. No, I love the video. It's great. Just get that thing spread, you know?
I can't take any credit for that.
It'll be posted on the, which Facebook page?
I know it's on the PD page.
The PD page, so we all need to go share it.
Okay. And we do plan on sending you guys a full recap of the event after it's concluded with some statistical data, so.
And the goal here is just to, let me say this, we don't want to arrest people. We want them to come in and pay their fines. Let me say that.
And I think kind of one of the overall goals is to maybe work into a process to where not, we don't really have this huge ramp up through this couple of week of process, and it happens more throughout the year. And just, you know, really, we're going to try to get as many people going online to take care of their payments as possible.
Thank you. So Chief Drake is here to talk about the annual report for the fire department. And again, it's that, everybody should have a copy.
No heckling from the back over there.
The police report.
Thank you for clarifying that for me. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to be here for you tonight. I want to start off by introducing you to one of my newest assistant chief, Shannon Martin, if you'd stand up. Shannon's been with the city since 1987. He's a 29-year employee. Most recently, served as a battalion chief for the department for the last 10-plus years. And he has hit the ground running come January. It doesn't seem that long ago. To him, it probably seems like an eternity. But he's over our fire operations, and he has done an outstanding job. We're blessed to have him as a part of our leadership team. So with that, I did pass out our annual report. Our annual report is something that we try to produce out and give out to the community. A lot of it, that annual report, is for our employees as well. Something that they can look back on in time and remember the things that happened significantly in 2016 or 2015, as it would be. So, but I'm going to kind of summarize on the high points tonight. I'm certainly not going to go over all aspects of that, and I would encourage you to review that. And if at a later point in time, there's something that I can address further in detail, I'd be more than happy to do so. I'm going to start off with our organizational chart. As I mentioned, Chief Martin is now over our fireside. This is a different look for us. And if you'll remember, Chief Fox, our other assistant chief, has, he moved over to the EMS side. So we broke our organization up a little bit due to the complexity and the depth at which we're really trying to hold ourselves accountable. We believe this organizational chart is going to work very well for us as we move forward. Kind of a, kind of a high overview of our overall operations. I'll say that 2015, we had the most calls for service we've ever had. We continue to see a little bit of an increase each year. Thankfully, it's not, it's not insurmountable amounts of increase. This year, it was a 5%. We made just right at 9,800 calls, low under 9,800 calls compared to 92 and some change in 2014. Our biggest increase is going to be on the EMS side, as we continue to see that increase each and every year by another 500 to 600 calls. Our calls into the county, I was talking to Ms. Garrett about this earlier, is that it continues to remain about the same, about 20% for the last three years in a row. It's 20, 20.1 or 20.2. So it's right at 20% each and every year. We continue to see a decline in our three-year average of workers' comp claims. That's something that we've, we try to measure in an effort to improve our wellness program, to evaluate the effectiveness of that. So we're certainly pleased with that. You know, some of the things that happened in 2015, obviously, we had a fire station opening. It's fire station number six, an asset that we're truly proud of. A professional development opportunity, the 100 Club funded us with a little bit over $18,000 in an effort to take all of our leadership team, all of our supervisors that ride the fire apparatus through a specific training program that will kind of help keep all of us on the same page on how we manage emergency scenes using some common language and some common concepts. So we're really looking forward to taking all of our employees that are supervisors through that. Also, this year, we saw our property solved, saved, not solved, property saved ratio of 97% versus loss. And so that's a number that we're extremely proud of. Our goal is to be, is to be at 95%, and we hit 97%. And so we had a decline in fires, so I don't want to skew that number from the year prior. But, you know, when we challenge our folks each and every day, and we look at our fire staffs and we benchmark a lot of the things, this is a great way to come back to them and say, hey, the things that you're doing are having an impact, and they're having an effect. And so if we don't measure those things, we have no way of knowing if we're doing okay, if we need to improve, or what we need to change. So that, that's a number that we're going to share with our, our employees haven't seen this yet. So this will be something that I share with them and really focus on as certainly a highlight for 2015. Also, we took possession of a new engine, three new ambulances. We saw an increase in the number of paramedics, which is, which is vital in our, in our, talking about the EMS calls continue to go up. So our folks get, the smaller that number, the more impact it has on that smaller group of employees. And so being able to increase that number has certainly spread out the responsibility on those medical calls. And this has really made a huge difference in the attitude of our employees by seeing this number continue to increase. The Lucas II CPR machines, we had talked to you guys for the last couple of years about it, look for some grant opportunities. And through the budget last year, we got the last two. So every ambulance now has the Lucas II CPR machine. And then our Mission Lifeline Silver, and that's, and that's the way that we, American Heart Association gave us that award for the way we handle our chest pain calls. And we have recently reapplied, and we're looking forward to trying to get the gold this year. You have to be, you have to be a bronze before you can be a silver, before you be a gold. So that's kind of the progression in that sequence. Looking at our Fire Marshal's Office, they completed more inspections than any year for, in the past 10 years, this past year. They've been extremely busy last year, the last couple of years with all the construction going on in the community. It's really had an impact on them. So for them to be able to continue to do that, their normal inspections, that's certainly a positive. About two years ago, we'd come to you guys through the budget process, asking for some iPads and some technology that would help them improve their efficiencies when they do those inspections. And that is now the device that they use when they do all inspections. It allows them to complete the inspection and close it out before they can walk out the door and email that inspection report to the business owner. They also started Compliance Engine last year, and that's, that was a way to, for, for businesses and contractors to be able to track compliance and deficiencies on fire alarm systems and sprinkler system installations. And instead of people always having to go out there and check everything, they got this common database that they can now utilize. And then they go out and do a final inspection when it's complete. And that has really taken off, and it's, has been a very, very efficient operation for the Fire Marshal's Office in being able to track those types of inspection reports. They've also seen an uptick in arson cases that they were able to get, get solved, even several 25- and 30-year prison sentence terms. So I think they're taking it very seriously that people that use fire as a weapon will be held accountable through that process. And public education continues to be a huge part of what we do. Our Shattered Dreams Program, we started two years ago, has been a huge success at both of the high schools. They're in the planning phase of that right now, and that's an alcohol-related accident reenactment. We're going to grow that this year to try to incorporate distracted driving as well, because that continues to be, we continue to see an uptick in the vehicle accident causes because of that. And then we also have a character program that they do every year over at the, at the school district. And that, if you've never seen that, they're a very talented group. They put on a great show. Typically, we'll show that over the course of three days to between 4,000 and 5,000 kids. So it has a huge impact, something they're, they're very, very proud of. Again, this is just an overview of our, our performance goals and our, and our response goals. I talked a little bit about the year-over-year-over-year report. 2013, 14, and 15, that's kind of a breakdown from 8,600 calls in 2013 to 9,789 calls in 2015. And also break that out by county, so that you can see what that, what that increase is through the county, because we do have a county contract, so we want to make sure that we're keeping good track of that as well. Some of the performance charts, I hope that in the document I provided you can tell what those things look like. Obviously, we brought on Station 6 in late 2015, so their number is way down there. But prior to that, we've had a really good balance of calls in the community in the way the districts are set up, in the way the stations are allocated within the community, from the busiest station being at 22% all the way down to 18%. So it's a, it's a good balance. And then as well, the performance benchmarks that are a little bit lower in that chart, and then on the next two charts as well. Again, ways that we try to track the things that we're doing, look at the, the performance of our employees, and try to challenge them to continuously be better in all that we do. Critical Care, we've discussed this with you a little bit over the last couple of years, and it's a new program we started about four years ago. We continue to really do some pretty amazing things through our Critical Care program. And on this next chart, I want to show you just an example of a document that D-TAR provide, provide to us. But I've also got an equal amount that Citizens provides to us as well. And this is a collaboration between, between our organization and these local hospitals. And we're really trying to measure how long it takes from the time somebody picks up the phone for, and in this particular case, it's a chest pain call, until the block that they're having in their heart is actually opened. And the national goal is 90 minutes. And if you'll, if you can look on this one, right above the date, 11/05/2015, that time was 47 minutes. We've had a few of these that were in the low 30s, and that doesn't happen by chance. That's a lot of people working really hard to, in the hospitals. The hospitals are fantastic. I mean, we continue to grow in our medical community and continue to challenge each other and hold each other accountable. And by doing that, our citizens benefit from that. And you can see the block, if you're looking at the two pictures, the one that's in red on the left, you'll notice it only has two looking, tree branch looking things there, and the one on the right has three. So the one on the right was where they actually opened the occlusion. And, and so they, they provide this type of documentation back to us, which we turn, in turn, share with our employees in an effort to, to measure the things that we're doing there. And I also wanted to give you just a quick update on, we implemented those Flex units back in late 2014. And one of the things that I, that I, one of the comments I made when we started doing that was we were trying to estimate what we thought that might save us. And if my memory serves me right, and I'm sure it does y'all's, they got to use a number of $50,000. And, and we were really taking a rough estimate of what that fuel is going to cost as opposed to what the wear and tear we're trying to save on the apparatus by changing to that concept. And if you don't remember what that Flex means, that meant at the two stations where we have a ladder truck, instead of responding in the ladder truck to any kind of medical call, that crew gets into a Tahoe, a much smaller vehicle, and makes that medical call in the Tahoe. And, and trying to save the wear and tear on those million-dollar ladder trucks. So we had a full year of 2014 and 15 to really kind of evaluate what, what that looks like. And if you can kind of follow me down, the operational cost in 2014 was $35,000 between all four of those units. And the operational cost in 2015 was $18,000 between all those units. So with 2015 was our year where we really had the opportunity to roll that out completely. And, I'm sorry, the ladder truck was $35,000 and $18,000 in 2015. And then the SV, which in the quint is the, the new ladder truck that's over at Station 1, their cost was $27,000 and $7,400. So anyway, you add those two numbers up, and roughly, we're saving about $35,000. And those costs are actual operational costs, repairs that we had to do, any kind of changes we had to make, fuel costs. That's, that's all-inclusive. So I just wanted to follow up with that, that we didn't just throw that program out there and not continue to try to measure to see, make sure it's hitting the markings, being effective. And then lastly, kind of talk just real briefly about our volunteer programs with our Fire Corps and also our chaplains. Both of these groups are wonderful groups that really step up and help us out at the drop of a hat, and we're very blessed to have them. And then lastly, I'd say this, that all of our success and all of the things that, that our guys and ladies do out there on a daily basis is because of our employees. I'm blessed to work with a great staff and, and great first responders that work hard each and every day to try to make a difference in this community. That's all I have.
Tanner, before you, if you said it, I don't remember you. But Tom Leckler's designation as Fire Marshal, that's incredible for this community.
He, Tom actually recently was awarded a Fire Marshal designation, which is a professional accreditation. Yeah, there it is at the bottom. And he is only one of 99 in the world to have this, to have this designation, and one of seven in the state of Texas. And so it's something he works very hard to, and to achieve. And, you know, we continue to try to push each one of our, our staff to, to raise the bar of expectation and to get outside their comfort zone, so.
Explain that designation.
I mean, because like, we have a position, Fire Marshal.
Yeah.
A what?
We have a position of Fire Marshal, and that's always been there.
So this is a, this is a third-party accreditation process, professional credentialing, where he has to set up a, you know, a five-year professional development program. He, and, and then all the things that he's done over the last five years come under scrutiny, and they have to, they look at everything he's done, the direction he's tried to lead his staff. And I probably don't even understand all the part, but it took him two years to get through it.
Is it like written test, too, or just?
No, 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 no. He has some evaluators that come in and, and do interviews with him and do interviews with, with key staff. Okay.
That's amazing. One question. Always remind people, this is a county-wide department. We do contract with county commissioners and the judges to provide searches out in the county. You will give this similar report to them?
What, what I've done typically is I meet with them, give them, my opportunity to meet with them individually and go over. I've done, I've done the presentation in front of their, their, and just didn't give them the opportunity to interact much. So, so yeah, I do meet with them every year, give them the opportunity to go over and ask questions, and, and they all, they always take advantage of it.
We respond to a lot of calls in the county. And of course, then we in turn, city manager negotiates contract with them for those services. But I just want to make sure they know how hard you guys work and your professionalism and what they're getting for that money. It's very important, so, good. Thank you.
One question. On this message from the chief, what are you holding up in that picture?
Glad you would ask that. That is a trophy that, that we took from the police department. It's just an observation of one of our council members.
She just had to do it. You had to just hope to bear over there.
Yeah, just making sure everybody knew we had it. And we still have that, by the way.
You know, people watch this meeting.
Did you ever get it blown up a little bit, Tony?
People watch this meeting on TV. I just want, if you've actually watched this long, it's, we've been here a couple of hours. There's a very friendly, healthy rivalry between the police department and the fire department. You enjoy that, so.
Absolutely. Great, great friendships, and we certainly work extremely well, our two agencies do.
Mayor, I need, one question.
Yes, sir.
I think I asked last year, when are we going to have another kickball game or some kind of competitive, get out there and let's see what you guys really got instead of talk?
Yeah. You know, when the police chief gets up and does his presentation to you guys, I'll let him comment on that.
And does that come with the barbecue? I hear y'all make some awesome barbecue.
We've got some talented cooks. We really do.
Good job, Tanner.
All right, thank you.
There's one last report, and then I have a couple of comments, if you don't mind. John, the mayor asks, we just ask if anybody has any questions on your report. So you've had it to read about B.J. Davis's comments last time, so we'll take any questions you may have.
No, thank you for providing that. That was very professionally done, concise. Thank you. So there may be a little bit of money that we need to reimburse, or no?
No, no, sir.
He recognizes that the engineering firm he had didn't handle the issue.
Couple of points, if you don't mind. The police chief did set out his annual report. He did his crime statistics last time, so there wasn't a need for him to get up and go over his annual report again, but that's for your review. Also, just on March 15th, we originally were going to do the debt capacity study. The fiscal advisor cannot be here on the March 15th, so we've moved it to April 5th. So on April 5th, we will have the debt capacity conversation. We will also talk, have the CIP conversation. We will also be adopting the comp plan that night. So next, at the next meeting on March 15th, there'll be a public hearing regarding the comprehensive plan. So if you are seeing anything in that comprehensive plan you would like for us to relook at, you can let me know, let John know. But at the next meeting on the 15th, will be a good opportunity to talk about that because we will bring it back on April 5th to adopt. So that, on that April 5th meeting, it's got three very meaty topics: CIP, debt capacity, and comprehensive plan adoption.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we do have an executive session, so we'll adjourn this meeting, and our executive session will be upstairs. So thank you.
The city council will recess for executive session on the first day of March 2016 at 7:34 PM. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows: Texas Government Code Section 551.072 to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property interests due to the fact that the deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the city in negotiations with third parties. And secondly, Texas Government Code Section 551.071, consultation with an attorney on a matter involving pending or contemplated litigation or other matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state of our Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Thank you.